Good evening and welcome to the March 25th meeting in Milton, Minnesota. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands.
Which stands.
Stand.
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 All right, thank you for that. Before we begin, last week Milton launched unexpectedly and all too early, the voice of Milton Football. Derek Snowden had been a part of Milton High School Sports for more than 30 years. He was the public address announcer, as I mentioned, for Milton High School Football. He was a public address announcer for Milton Academy Football. He was a fixture in the gym and he was a public address announcer for basketball. Last year, he was named for his service of over 30 years. He was named to the Milton High School Athletic Hall of Fame. More than any of that, as I understand, he was a man of great spirit and great humor. And it has been said of him that the whole town of Milton will really miss him. So I'll ask everyone just to join us in a moment of silence for Derek Snowden. All right, thank you for that. We'll move next to item three, which is really the preface to public comment. So if anyone is on the line for public comment, I'm going to describe how we're going to try to do this. And that is, we're going to unmute all the lines when we call for public comment. And I will ask anyone who wants to be recognized for public comment to state their name and to state the last, if they're attending by phone, to state the last four digits of their telephone number so we can recognize them. After I have the list of people who wish to be recognized, people who stated their name, and if they're by phone, stated their name and the last four digits of their phone number, then all the lines will go back on mute and I will recognize those who want to speak one at a time. Okay? So.
Mr. Chair, this is Richard, just one point on this.
Yes, Richard.
Just given that we can't see anyone, can we at least, at a point of order, advise them upfront if they could keep their comments to around three minutes only because we have no idea how many are out there, how long this could be.
Yes, yes. That's a good point. So typically, public comment is confined to 15 minutes. That's our standard for public comment. So depending on how many people we have participating, we'll ask you to try to keep your comments to three to five minutes, again, depending on how many participate. And for those who are wishing to speak on the 648 Canton Ave issue, that's going to be a little bit later. That's not public comment. So if you want to speak on 648 Canton Ave, I'll ask you to wait. That's going to come a little bit later. This public comment will be for everything other than 648 Canton Avenue. Okay? All right. So Hillary, I'm going to ask you to unmute all the lines and I'll ask people to, as best we can at one at a time, just state your name and if you want to speak on public comment, state your name. And if you're attending by phone, the last four digits of your phone number.
I'm muting the lines now.
Okay. All right, so the lines are unmuted. Does anyone wish to be recognized for public comment, not including the 648 Canton Ave, which will come later? Going once? Going twice? All right. Not hearing anyone for public comment. We will move on to item five. And Hillary, I'll ask you to mute all the lines except for the members and Mr. Dennehy.
Heading in that direction now, go ahead.
Okay. All right. So item five is an update, the COVID-19 update. The update from the Public Health Department from, hold on one second. Update from our Public Health Director, Caroline Cincella, who is otherwise occupied this evening and will give us a full report at our next meeting. But she wanted me to report that the number of confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Milton rose by three today. And so now the total number of cases in Milton is 15. And so, and at our next meeting, and we can talk about later when we will meet next by video conference, at our next meeting Caroline will go into more depth about the status of those cases and any update beyond that as well. That is what Caroline had to report, just the number. Moving on to the other items of the COVID-19, we had on the agenda the state and federal legislation, but I think we discussed that on Monday with Senator Timbaultine and Representative Criscoll. Do any of the members have anything further on this at that point? Further on that at this point, sorry. Hearing none, I'll move on.
Michael, this is Richard, just one point.
Yeah.
I just want to, if you just update on all the governor's action today with regard to schools on May 4th.
Yes. So the governor and his press conference today announced that statewide, all schools, public and private, would be now closed through May 4th. Previously, it had been April 7th, but now all schools are closed through May 4th. So for those who haven't seen that, who haven't seen that update. I'm sure we'll be.
Thank you, Michael.
I'm sure we'll be hearing from the Milton Public Schools on that. I'm sure there'll be an update based on that from the Milton Public Schools. And I'm sure they'll get in touch with all of us as well. All right. Item 5B, we had a brief discussion on Monday about a potential rent abatement for the town lessees, which includes the Milton Arts Center and the Yacht Club. And I think Katie, you had thought about that on Monday.
Yes, and I think everyone, Mr. Chair, was agreeable on Monday to trying to grant some relief to the, in particular, the three tenants, the Milton Arts Center, the Discovery Schoolhouse, and the Yacht Club, all of whom rent property from the town. And you sent, you forwarded emails to the board that you had asked a couple of tenants how they were faring during these times. So for discussion purposes, I'm going to move that we abate rent for two months for each of the Milton Arts Center, the Discovery Schoolhouse, Milton Yacht Club, under its lease of the former East Milton Building, the Kitter Library Building, and the Milton Landing property respectively.
Michael, this is Richard, I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, and they need discussion.
This is Kate, I just want to add, I think we all recognized on our call the other tenants, these are all valued community members. And in particular, the Arts Center, they rely on a lot of volunteers and a lot of private donations. The Discovery Schoolhouse relies on volunteers. The Yacht Club relies on working with its own members and students. So directly helping Milton residents, I think, are all three of these. But they're all organizations that do a lot of good, help them, and educationally in case of the schoolhouse. We're all, everyone in some way is suffering through some difficulties during this period. And I think for the time being, to abate their rent for two months, we can open your visit later if this is prolonged.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question to follow up to Katie's point? Can we maybe make this a little specific? Let's abate the rent for April and say, May, those two months for now, so that, or do you want it to be more loose than that, Katie? I'm not sure how you want to do it.
You could do that, Richard. My only thought was, I'm not sure when all of them pay their rent and whether some of them have already, anyone has submitted a check already. So that might, it might give more flexibility if we just say two months, but that's probably.
Okay, okay, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that then.
It may be that, you know, one of them may not have yet paid March rent, so.
Okay.
You'll get earlier relief.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm good with that. I agree with Katie, I'm fine on that.
Mr. Chair, Mike Dennehy here.
Yeah, Mike.
I just want, for the record, I just want to state that this is not general fund money. This is money, for those that didn't watch the Select Board meeting Monday night, this is money that goes into a revolving fund that funds the building maintenance on each of these three properties. It's not something that'll come out of the general fund.
That's a good point, Mike. And the amount, as we discussed on Monday night, the amount, the monthly amount for all three is $4,542. And if you noted, those payments reported in the general funds, they don't come out of the operating budget. So it's not part of the operating budget, at least. So the extent that we have, the extent that we have limitations based on, based on the events of the last month and the coming months, this won't affect the operating budget, so. Certainly something, yeah, certainly something we can do. Any other comments or questions from the members? All right, all those in favor, there's going to be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Anything else on, anything else on the COVID-19? I think Mike's later going to be talking about the budget a little bit, but he will take that up in his, in his report. Anything else on COVID-19 from the members?
It'll be a marathon.
Ms. Collins? Sorry, Richard.
Oh, no. Yes, so this is Melinda Collins. I just wanted to note that some of the initial information and guidance for the program, the Families First Program, which is a federal program, has come out today and that chambers of commerce may want to, or the Chamber of Commerce may want to look at that. And I think we can connect them with some of that guidance and resources as well.
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point. Richard, did you have something?
Nope, I'm good. I'm good. As I said, we're going to be in this for a long time. And I think you've covered everything that we need to know for right now.
Great. All right, moving to item six. This is a discussion on the 40B process. And we have asked our consultant, Judy Barrett, who was assisting us, who assisted us with our response to the project eligibility notice and that is, assisting us with our comments on the project eligibility notices, the three other project eligibility notices that we received. We've asked Ms. Barrett to give the community some background on 40B. We want to make sure that people, the community has some further background on what the process is, what 40B entails. And since Judy is helping us, we thought she could help the community as well. So just a quick background, Judy has been in planning and community development for over 30 years, both in the private and the public sector. She has been, as I said, she's been in community development and planning practices. She's worked with 40B for many, many, many projects in 40B. She is a graduate of Harvard University and she studied economics and community development at Harvard University and Tufts University. And so I'm going to ask Judy, and Hillary, if you could unmute Judy's line, I'm going to ask Judy just to give us some background on 40B for the community. Judy?
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm going to try to do this as a screen share so I can present some slides. Having not done this before, I can't guarantee that it will work well, but let's give it a whirl and see. I just think it might be easier, people can kind of see the slides while I'm talking as well. So hold on a second and let me try to make this work.
It's working, Judy.
Yep, I just need to get it to slideshow. Wow.
It's actually coming up very well on cable on Channel 8 as well.
Super. Okay, so is the sound okay? Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes.
Super, okay. So I want to just start by saying, almost everything I'm going to tell you right now is really from the perspective of the town has received a project eligibility letter, a developer's been approved, and is going to apply to the Board of Appeals. And the reason I'm saying that is that the likelihood is, one or more of these projects may end up in that situation. And so I want the town to be thinking about what it can do at that point when someone is coming in seeking approval. It's important to understand this because this process that's going on right now, where Mass Housing is asking the town for comments on potential applications, Mass Housing doesn't do the kind of review that the Zoning Board of Appeals will do. They're not a permitting agency. They're really, almost like, they're a door into the process that gets a developer to the ZBA, but they're not a permitting agency. So a lot of the things that people care about and that are appropriate things to be concerned about with these projects, from a Mass Housing perspective or any other subsidizing agency, those are things that would be seen as more appropriate for the local officials to try to regulate than for a state agency to make a judgment call about. So I'm going to sort of frame that, frame the whole presentation that way. And then at appropriate places, I'll kind of pull it back to where you are right now, which is, nobody has an approval yet, but somebody probably will get one. So the most important thing I think people need to understand, we all talk about Chapter 40B as this comprehensive permit law, but the reality is it's the Regional Planning Act. And I think people kind of need to understand that, at least to be able to appreciate why you guys all of a sudden are hearing about Chapter 40B applications. The regional planning law that I'm talking about is the same law that created the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. So that passed in the early 1960s. And at the end of the 1960s, the regional planning law was amended to add the four sections that we all call Chapter 40B, but really comprised the comprehensive permit law. And the reason that it's in the Regional Planning Act is that the whole premise of Chapter 40B is to address regional housing disparities, to be able to open up opportunities for people to choose to live within the same labor market where they work and not perhaps be confined to particular areas where housing happens to be less expensive. So the law assumes that a community has met its fair share of the regional housing need if at least 10% of the housing in that community is on the subsidized housing inventory, which I'll talk about more in a minute. And so if it's on the SHI, it is presumed to be affordable to low-income people and that it has been approved by some kind of state or federal housing program. So if you're at 10%, you're presumed to have met your regional fair share. So the law applies to all the communities in Massachusetts, except Boston. And so if everybody's at 10%, then all of a sudden, everybody's met their regional fair share. But that's not really where we are today. What we talk about when we talk about comprehensive permits for affordable housing is housing that counts toward that 10%. It's affordable to households with incomes at or below 80% of what we call the area median income, which again is a regional standard, and that it's made available on a fair and open basis to people who are income eligible. All that really means is that if you actually have affordable units built under Chapter 40B or some other mechanism, that there has to be a way for people who live outside of Milton to apply, just as you would want people inside Milton to apply. Most federal housing programs use this kind of standard of a percentage of the regional median. The reason for the regional median harkens back to the whole premise of the law, which is that it is to account for regional disparity. So using a regional standard kind of equalizes the opportunities throughout a labor market area for people to have some choices about where they might live. You folks are in a regional area called the Boston-Cambridge-Quincy metro area, so your income limits are the same as the ones that apply to Boston or to Somerville or to Beverly or, you know, anybody in this sort of large area that you can picture is essentially the area that's served by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. This is kind of what those income limits mean right now. These are the income limits that are the maximum. They're not necessarily indicative of the income limits that might apply to a particular project. But if you had, say, a household of two, their maximum income to qualify to live in a Chapter 40B unit would be $71,400. So some developments are funded under, or approved under subsidy programs where the income limits are much lower than this. I just sort of wanted to give you a sense of, this is kind of the maximum. And it just goes, I've just showed here that it's households of one to four because the income limits are adjusted for household size. As I mentioned earlier, to count on the subsidized housing inventory, units have to be made available on some kind of a fair and open basis. What that means from a practical point of view is that units have to be offered under an affirmative fair housing marketing plan that's been reviewed and approved by somebody in a position other than the town. It's typically the subsidizing agency. So if one of these developments goes forward that you're hearing about now, it would probably be Mass Housing. The Department of Housing and Community Development is the agency that actually handles 40B policy. So they're the ones who create the housing plan standards. Then all the subsidizing agencies follow those standards in terms of what they require from developers. Local preference may be allowed, frankly, it usually is, but the community has to request it. It's not an automatic thing. What I, that line at the bottom of the slide about not being within the board's jurisdiction is simply to point out that it's the subsidizing agency that determines whether the housing plan is approvable as a fair housing plan. That's not to say that a town can't ask a developer to make some units available, perhaps at a lower income level, or to perhaps provide some additional benefit for people with disabilities, but ultimately, it's the subsidizing agency that makes those decisions. There are three ways for a community to be in compliance, for lack of a better word, with Chapter 40B, the Affordable Housing Law. The most common one we talk about, and it's the one I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, is this concept of 10%. So if you're at, if you're, if at least 10% of the housing units in your community are on the subsidized housing inventory, it's the easiest way to think about this. If they're on the SHI, if you're 10% of your most recent decennial census, which was 9,641 units, that's your year-round housing stock. So if you had 965 units on the SHI, you'd be at 10%. But you're not, you have less than that. So right now, you're at 4.97%. There are two other standards that apply to 40B. One is the so-called general land area minimum, which I know you guys have talked a bit about recently. What that says is that if at least 1.5% of the land area in your town that's zoned for housing, for commercial, for industrial development, if that is already occupied by lower moderate income housing, then you would be deemed to have met the statutory requirement, even if you weren't at 10%. And the third standard is, if the Board of Appeals was presented with a project that would disturb more than 0.3 of 1% of the land in your town, again, this land area is determined through the same methodology that applies to the 1.5%, if it was going to disturb at least 0.3 of 1% of the land in your town, the board could turn that project down. That's very hard to read. It's not about the site, it's about literally the ground that gets disturbed. So it's a pretty hard standard to meet, but there are three. And I always, I think it's important for communities to know this because many of us who deal with 40B all the time talk about 10%, like 10% is the be-all and end-all. And it is the standard that probably most communities have to concern themselves with, but there are these two other mechanisms in the law. So I just want to be, to be open about that. There are some other ways for communities to manage the affordable housing development process that are not in the statute. Those three standards I just mentioned are statutory, they're in Chapter 40B. These provisions, the four that are on the screen now, are all a function of regulation. And they include, one, having a housing production plan, which I know your community just got approval for one. Another, and that is a way to say, we're going to plan to get to 10% in a sort of orderly way. And if you do that systematically and you reach certain annual production goals, it enables your Board of Appeals to say to a developer who comes through the door, "We don't think we have to approve you because we've already met our burden for the year." And if you have an approved housing production plan, you get to invoke those annual standards. So that's one kind of opportunity. The plan itself doesn't do anything except enable you to request certification of that plan if you actually produce in earnest some additional housing in a given year. There's another standard that is the recent progress standard, so-called. So even if you don't have a housing plan, but you produce a whole lot of units in one year, Board of Appeals might be able to invoke recent progress and say, "We don't have to approve your project now the new developer coming through the door because we just approved a whole bunch of new units." There's another standard that basically intends to protect very small towns from a large project that it really couldn't handle. So the idea of the large project review is that if your year-round housing stock exceeds or is below a certain number, then a project can't be larger than X. And so for a very small town, that might be as low as 150. For a town your size, it could be 300. And then finally, there's this concept of the related application, which is if a developer comes to your planning board or your Board of Appeals to request a special permit or a subdivision approval or something and is turned down, the developer can't rush back in and say, "I'm going to do a 40B," as a matter of spite. There has to be a cooling off period. So these four provisions exist in the regulations, I think kind of all in an effort to say to communities, "If you partner with us, we'll try to make it a little easier for you to get to 10% and not just sort of be hit all at once." For someone to apply to your Board of Appeals at all, they have to be either a public agency like a housing authority, a nonprofit housing development corporation, or what we call limited organization, which is essentially a for-profit developer that agrees to limit their profit distribution. They have to have evidence of site control. Doesn't mean they have to own the property, but they have to have a controlling interest, which typically is established with a purchase-sale agreement. And then the third thing is, there must be evidence of a determination by a subsidizing agency, typically Mass Housing, that the developer is, has a site that's eligible and that the project is generally eligible under the rules of that subsidy program. So all three of those things have to be true for a developer to go to the Board of Appeals and request a comprehensive permit. So you're right now in that phase of, four developers are seeking project eligibility approval. Until they get that, they're not in front of the Board of Appeals. That's why I was saying, this presentation is really aimed more at what happens once they're in front of you, but I want you to know, if they get through that door, then all of this will be important information, I think, for the town to think about how it's going to manage. Once an application comes through the door, there are deadlines that the board needs to deal with. And but when I say the board, I mean the Board of Appeals because it's important to understand that the comprehensive permit is entirely within the jurisdiction of the ZBA. So things that typically the planning board or somebody else handles, they all end. So things that typically the planning board or somebody else handles, they all end up with the ZBA. I'll get to that in a minute. An application comes through the door, the very first thing you do is is you distribute it out to the departments and the boards and commissions that need to help the ZBA review the application. This, the same, at the same time, you need to schedule a public hearing. You must open the public hearing within 30 days. The timelines under 40B are different than they are under the zoning act. And the reason is that that the act, the comprehensive permit law seeks to encourage the production of affordable housing. So everything kind of gets condensed. So you have to open the hearing within 30 days. If the Board of Appeals thinks it has a right to turn down the application for some reason, they have to tell the developer. The developer gets to appeal if he doesn't agree or she doesn't agree. The Department of Housing and Community Development steps in. They they make a determination. Let's assume for the sake of this presentation that they say the board is wrong, the developer is right. Now the project comes back to the ZBA for the hearing process and the board has 180 days to conclude that hearing. That's not to say they can't get an extension from a cooperative developer, but you kind of have to start out thinking, I've got 180 days to manage this process. Once the board closes the hearing, they have to render a decision in 40 days and file with the town clerk. So under zoning, again, that's usually a longer timeline, but with a 40B, things get compressed. And then people have 20 days to appeal, which is pretty standard for any other type of permit. So these timelines are all very important, but I just have to go back and stress the reason that opened the public hearing in 30 days is in bold is that we've had a few communities that didn't recognize that and ended up with what's called a constructive approval, meaning they missed a statutory deadline and the developer became by default eligible for an approval. So you don't want to let that happen. The scope of the comprehensive permit for the Board of Appeals, they have jurisdiction over all local requirements. So that's zoning, it's subdivision control. If you have a local wetlands bylaw, that goes to the ZBA. The Conservation Commission will still conduct a review under the State Wetlands Act. But the Board of Appeals determines whether to grant waivers under the local wetlands bylaw. If you have a historic district, if a property is proposed in a local historic district, that goes to the ZBA. And similarly, if any relief is required under a scenic roads act, that goes to the ZBA. The whole point is that when all of this authority gets subsumed under that comprehensive permit, it then falls to the ZBA to decide whether to grant waivers that the applicant will end up requesting. Because the whole premise of the comprehensive permit is I can't build this project unless you give me relief. That your local zoning, your local zoning, other requirements will impede the construction of this project. The board has a right to ask for help and they certainly should. It's at the applicant's expense, as with any other permitting process. The board can say, we need a peer review consultant. We need an independent expert. We need help reviewing civil engineering. We need help from a traffic consultant. We want a design consultant. The the board's ability to engage those peer review consultants at the applicant's expense, excuse me, is is only in response to matters that are submitted by the applicant. So the board can't ask the applicant for money to go conduct independent studies. It's simply to review what the applicant has submitted. So the applicant has to provide funding. It goes in an escrow account. The ZBA hires the consultants it wants to hire and it pays them from that escrow account. And of course, anything that comes out of that process excuse me, becomes part of the record of the hearing. There are things that are not in the board's purview. The board basically has to look at a comprehensive permit like you would look at any other development in terms of the things that you can regulate. The board can regulate the physical, the operational, the aesthetic aspects of the project. They can't, they're, they're, they're not involved in reviewing things like who's going to live there. Whether there are going to be children in the development or not is not part of the ZBA's review process. They have, they end up really with a scope of authority that's kind of like any other sort of as a bright development would have. So these things don't get looked at in any other type of permitting process. And therefore, they really are not part of the comprehensive permit. I think it's just important to understand. It's why I always say, focus on the things that you can control. That's how you end up getting the best development that you can for your community. When the board is ready to make a decision, they have to balance the regional housing need. Now we're back to that regional framework of the act with local concerns that are recognized in the act. And those local concerns include public health, public safety, environmental impact, design aesthetics are an eligible consideration in this process, open space and planning. And I just want to point out when the act talks about planning, it doesn't mean that you can just sort of plan 40Bs to go away. What it does mean is that if your town has, say, a master plan and the master plan explicitly provides for affordable housing development and identifies places where that could go and it's been implemented. If all of that is true, then you have an active plan. And that can sort of help the community, perhaps deny an application that's not appropriate. But planning on its own doesn't do anything for you unless it focuses on and has actually achieved the creation of affordable housing. So that's the context for planning in the law. The board can either deny the application, approve it as submitted, which I've never seen, or approve it with conditions. Typically, I think boards try to approve with conditions if they can, only because the appeal process probably works a little bit more in their favor, I guess. But but those are the options available to the board. And and I would just say, there are times when no matter how many conditions you think you can put on a project, you can't make it right for your community. And in that case, you know, you deny it and the chips fall where they may. You either win your appeal or you don't. But I don't think anybody should go into this process feeling like we're just going to have four horrible projects thrown on us because it's not really like that. But I think there's a perception that that it is like that. It's not. If the applicant's unhappy with the board's decision, the applicant can appeal to a state entity called the Housing Appeals Committee. Anybody else who's unhappy goes to Superior Court or the Land Court. So that's a real short overview of kind of how this works. But but I would just say where you are right now as a town is you're being asked by a subsidizing agency, what do you think? And, you know, is there, are there things about this site we should know? Are there things about the project that we should know? Because those are the kinds of things we're going to look at. But then matters that become part of the regulatory process, the ones, the items that I listed earlier about what the things that the board can regulate, the subsidizing agencies just generally don't go there because to them, that is the ZBA's jurisdiction. They're really doing a 10,000 feet off the ground review.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. That's great. So I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask the members if they have, the members if they have any comments or questions, but I, but I think, oh, great. Yeah. I just wanted to ask you to take the screen share. All right. So comments or questions from the members for Judy?
Judy, this is Katie Conlon.
Hi.
Be kind of tangentially related to one of your later comments in the presentation, but you know, one thing that we're working on is makes you sort of a zoning for Milton Village, which is one of our smaller. Only have three or four, well, three, technically four, but three that people think of business districts in the town. And it's a smaller one than East Milton Square. But there is an affordable housing component to that. So how helpful would that be in terms of future applications? Or maybe these applications, if we're able to get that zoning passed at our town meeting in a few months, or if it possibly, I don't know whether anything would be developed under it right away. It probably won't. It might take some time. But how would that, how would overlay zoning like that be viewed by mass housing and other subsidizing agencies?
I think they will look at it as here's a town that's trying very hard to create affordable housing. And they might respect that. But ultimately, what they, the thing that will sort of tilt them to perhaps not approve, not grant a project eligibility letter, really has more to do with, so what's the production track record then? And and I don't want to leave you with the impression that somehow, you know, nothing helps because that's not true either. There was a town recently that managed to get a project eligibility letter denied that that had not had a very strong track record, but some. But I think that that's really the point is what's happening with production in your town. And and that's why in the letter that we we worked with you on for the other project, Ice House project, we at least talked about not only did the town adopt the zoning, but here's some activities come out of this. How influential that's going to be with the the mass housing? You know, probably not that influential because they're going to look at that as small numbers compared to the the scale of the the gap between where you are and regional need. But you should say those things. Now, what, and you tell them that this is the stuff that we're doing and this is what we've already done. I will say this. If you have an overlay district that somehow enables you to create the sort of minimum number of units you need to create to hit like a one year goal under your your housing production plan. And of course, I'm embarrassed to tell you right now on this, in this conversation, I don't remember what that number is, but pardon me?
Forty-eight.
Thank you. You know.
For a long time.
Okay. So so if you managed to produce 48 new SHI units before anybody applied for a comprehensive permit, that would be helpful to your ZBA. Because once you've done that, you can request certification of your housing plan. Now with that in hand, the ZBA could say, if it chooses, we're not going to approve your project. They can, they can still approve it. They can still go forward with the 40B process. But but they don't have to, they could just simply say, we're not, we don't think we can deny you. I will just say this, they still have to open the hearing. They still have to tell the developer they think they can deny. And DHCD still gets involved. But it's a very different can of worms. Once you've got a certified housing plan.
Is it just following up? But generally speaking, efforts like Milton Village zoning, if it's enacted by, approved by town meeting who by the AGs often, they go through the whole process and we have potentially some development under it down the road, that could help.
Absolutely. Yes. Anything that you're doing to work toward the 10% that's making meaningful progress is not, is not ignored. It's just that I think when you're at 4.9% and the gap is what you've got, it's hard to say two units here, two units there, but those things do matter. And so I would never, as a planner, I would always encourage a town, do what you think is right for your community and if it's going to be, come, deal with it, but but do your planning. And you guys are, which is great.
Thank you.
Other, other comments or questions from the members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Tony?
Judy, what is the town that managed to successfully get that project eligibility denial letter?
It was Medfield.
How long ago was that?
It seems to me as though it might have been 18 months ago. They, they have done an amazing job in Medfield. I actually didn't know until I started working on their master plan a few months ago how much progress they had made. So they have an approved housing production plan. They've been certified a couple of times. I think this, this problem, this application may have come in between certification periods. But they, they would have been able to make a credible argument from a state point of view, from a state point of view, they were able to make an argument, we've done all this 40B activity, which they had done, and they've done more since. So I would just be a little bit careful about assuming that because Medfield did it, somebody else can. But but it was Medfield. I mean, if you want, if you're interested, I can send you a copy of Mass Housing's denial letter and you can see it.
I would like that. Yes, if you could.
Yeah, I can. I'm happy. I'll send it to Mike and you guys can share it.
Wonderful. Thank you.
No problems.
Other, other comments or questions from the members?
Sure. This is Richard. Judy, I just, I just have one question. This has come up, it came up a little bit in our, one, a couple of our East Milton meetings, and I saw one resident did include it in their comments, I think on the Bull Avenue project. So on the general land, land mass area, 1.5. Is it what, no, 15% or 1.5? Right now, the numbers are spinning in my head. Yeah, 1.5. And I believe we were at like 1.24 or something, the last time that we tried to do this. I think it was under the Muse project. And I do believe one of the factors that would weigh into this is since that that number was achieved, oh, it was, oh, it's not achieved, we didn't achieve it, since that number was identified, we've lost 30 acres to the Pulte project of open space. And I believe, doesn't that hurt us in this endeavor if we were to try to do it again, right, right out of the box?
I, I don't have enough GIS expertise to comment on how it was done before. I just, I, I'm speechless because I don't quite know how to answer your question. I think that, I think any town that is going to try to do this needs to pay, needs to really read the current guidelines. That's all I'm going to say. But if you the perspective, how do I say this? The perspective of state housing, housing agencies is to see housing built, affordable housing built. So it's important to kind of understand that that's where they're coming from, whether you like it or not. The guidelines are not going to be made easy to meet. That's the most honest answer I can give you. The guidelines are not going to be written to be easy to meet. And I can think of towns that I would have thought would have been at 1.5% that are not. That would be, have been a much stronger position, in my opinion, than you guys are. It's becoming, it's in vogue now to invoke 1.5% as sort of the cure. It's in vogue. And I, I think if you actually read what's been written about it at the Housing Appeals Committee level, et cetera, I think you're going to find that people aren't, aren't, aren't winning these cases. They're not. But but there's a view out there that somehow somebody's going to, somebody's going to get there and somebody will get there. But I don't think it's going to be Milton, just based on what I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the members?
Can I just add one thing, Mike? I think, I think that 40B really contentious. It's really contentious and people don't like it. And for, you know, some reasons that are, I think, very appropriate reasons, but but it's important to try to focus on what you think you can control. What do you think you can do to get the best project you can for your town? Because there are a lot of people, there, there are people out there who will try to tell you, well, if you just do this, you just do that, that you can make this go away. And you could spend a lot of time going down one of those rabbit holes and still end up where you are right now.
Thank you, Judy. Any, any other comments or questions from the member? All right, Judy, thank you. Time. I'm sure if you need to sign off, feel free. You, I know you've been watching the comment periods. We're going to have the the comment period, additional comment period on 648 Canton Avenue. You're welcome to listen to it now if you want to, or you can, if you have certainly other things to do, we, what we've been doing is to send you the recording so you can listen to it later. Whatever works for you. So, but appreciate your time, appreciate your, your expertise and your, your, your taking the time with us this evening.
Can I just add one last point? Your, your town planner just reminded me as we've been on this discussion. And I should have thought about this too, that part of what probably aided the town of Medfield is all the work they've done to bring the Medfield State Hospital project to fruition. So the zoning for that, in fact, passed in November. So they're really looking forward to a very exciting prospect for redevelopment of of a beautiful piece of property. And that's been watched for a long time. So I'm sure that helped them in their efforts to say, we're doing our part. Do you want me to stay on mic or you guys all set?
I think we're all set. You know, we'll, as we have before, we'll send you the recording. So you'll see all the comments to the extent that we, you know, you'll see all the comments. And you'll have them as we attempt to, you know, craft our response to mass housing, the project eligibility response to to mass housing. So.
Sure. That's fine.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good meeting, guys.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to go to item seven, which is our public meeting on the 40B site eligibility application for 648 Canton Avenue. We're going to, we're going to conduct this the way that we've conducted our prior hearings on taking comments for our comments for the, to the project eligibility letter that we received for mass housing. And again, as Judy pointed out, this is the first stage of the process before the zoning Board of Appeals process that that would come after this. And so let me remind those who want to make comments that for our response to mass housing, Mass Housing on the project eligibility, eligibility letter, uh, we're looking for three things, and we're looking for commentary and comments on three things, just to remind everyone. One, uh, that the site of the proposed project is generally appropriate for residential development. That's one of the aspects that we're, we're seeking comments that, to incorporate and to, and to integrate into our comments on. Two, that the conceptual design, the conceptual project design is generally appropriate for the site on which it is located. Uh, again, that's an appropriate thing to comment on. And then finally, that the proposed project appears to be financially feasible within the housing market in which it will be situated. Uh, and so those are the three areas, uh, that we, uh, we are required to, to, um, to comment on in our comments. And our process here is to try to get community feedback through this process, through these meetings, through emails, um, that we've set up through our website, so that we can integrate the comments of the community and reflect those in our comments to Mass Housing in response to this letter. Um, a, a few things, one thing to, to mention, and again, that I've mentioned at the prior hearings, um, the things that, the matters that are not appropriate to comment on, and that we, we cannot include in our comments in response to Mass Housing, are those matters that might affect the civil rights of those who may live in the development, if it ever comes to fruition. Uh, for example, uh, you know, uh, we, it's inappropriate to comment on whether there'll be families with school-aged children, whether there'll be single, single parents, whether there'll be low-income people, whether there'll be people with disabilities. It's not appropriate for us to comment on those things that, that may, that may suggest some kind of discrimination, or may affect the civil rights of those who may, may live in those projects. So, uh, with that preface, uh, we are conducting this, our first public hearing, uh, by Zoom, and so, uh, please bear with us, as we do the best we can on this. Uh, I'll ask everyone to address the chair, address me, uh, and we'll take your comments, and this is all being recorded, and we'll be able to try to integrate that into our comments to Mass Housing. So procedurally, now, the way we're going to do this, and the way we're going to try to do this, is I'm going to ask, um, the coordinator, our executive secretary, to take everyone off mute. And when she takes everyone off mute, I'm going to ask those people who wish to speak to state their name, and we'll try to do this as, as best we can, to state their name, and to state if they're, if they're, um, participating by phone, to state the last four digits of their phone number, so we can identify them. And then once we have that list, uh, I'm going to take, we're going to take down the names and the numbers of all those people who wish to speak on this. Once we have that list, we're going to then mute, uh, all of the participants again, and we're going to unmute each participant who has identified themselves as wishing to speak. Uh, so that's the process that we're going to go through now. Um, and, uh, so I'm going to ask Hillary to unmute all of the, um, all of the participants, and then I'm going to ask people to, um, a, a, as orderly as we can, state their name, and if they're participating by phone, to state the last four digits in their phone number. All right, so Hillary, could you take everyone off mute, please?
Yes, I am unmuting the lines now, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
All right, so if people could go ahead and just, uh, state their name, and then state their, if they're, again, if they're participating by phone, the phone number, uh, the last four digits of their phone number.
If you could go ahead and just state your name, and then state their exact number, because you want the phone number, the last.
Joey, you? Okay, so I have Joseph Pugh.
John and Nicole Nielsen at 640 Canton Ave.
John and Nicole Nielsen.
Elizabeth Janega at 658 Canton Avenue, 2874.
2874, Janega. John and Nicole.
Oh, maybe those are just people that are going to talk.
Yeah, and then they'll mute, and then they'll call out each person.
You want to talk on this?
Nope. Other people who wish to speak, so far I have three, Joseph Pugh, John and Nicole Nielsen at 648 Canton Ave, and Elizabeth Janega at 658 Canton Ave, who is at number 62874. Any additional people who wish to speak?
Lara Roach, 44 Holmes Lane.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? And let me add this, after these four people speak, and I'll, uh, hold on a minute, Hillary, because we're going to give people one more chance, after these four people speak, we'll do this again, and give people another opportunity, to the extent that they haven't. So, so, uh, so, uh, I'll just add one more time, uh, anyone else wishing to speak on, um, the, um, 40B site eligibility application for 648 Canton Avenue?
Uh, Joe Dolan, uh, 659 Canton Avenue, uh, 5563.
5563. 659 Canton Avenue, 5563. Anyone else wishing to speak on, um, on the 648 Canton Avenue? Going once? Going twice? All right, so I have, so Hillary, I'm going to ask you now to, to unmute all the lines, except for, uh, the members and Mr. Dennehy. And for, and for those being muted, you're going to have another chance after these five people, to the extent that you change your mind and you want to, you, you do want to, you do want to say something, so, so you will have another chance. Right now, I have five, Joseph Pugh, John and Nicole Nielsen of 640 Canton Ave, Elizabeth Janega, 2874 of 658 Canton Ave, Lara Roach of 44 Holmes Lane, and Joe Dolan of 659 Canton Ave, 5563. So, um, uh, Hillary, could you, could you first, um, uh, unmute Joseph Pugh, please?
Go ahead, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you very much. Um, my name is Joey Pugh, uh, and I, I didn't mention earlier, I'm at 667 Canton Avenue. Um, I'm adjacent from the proposed project. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of a number of families from Elm, Gulliver, and Wendell Park, uh, which are three densely packed neighborhoods, full of families that are going to be basically in front of this, uh, proposed project. Um, I would say kind of my main point here, that I think, uh, you know, was concerning from the original meeting, was that the project has consistently been referred to as residential, when really, in fact, it seems very much a commercial development that happens to be residential. I think that the vast majority of opposition to this project really lies in that. Um, it's an extraordinarily large building that really isn't in keeping with the surrounding ones or building types. Um, quite frankly, it's going to be looming over Canton Avenue and the abutters, and really will kind of completely change the landscape of the area. Um, you know, we have concerns like others that were in the original meeting, um, as it relates to the massive traffic impact on Canton Avenue, an already busy road. Um, we have concerns on the impacts to the wetland buffers and the groundwater impacts of the development, uh, which would be a massive increase in impervious surface, the scale height and FIR don't fit in a single-family neighborhood zone. Um, and really, you know, that's concisely, um, you know, the, the main objects here, that, but I think that the biggest one really, uh, to me, is that this is just a massive, massive building, uh, that doesn't fit with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Okay, Hillary, if you could, if you could mute Mr. Pugh and unmute, uh, John and Nicole Nielsen, uh, at 640 Canton Ave, I, I think it's, it's the picture of the man in the car.
Go ahead, Nielsen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Um, I just want to kind of echo some of the things that we mentioned in the first meeting, and then also the letter I sent, um, to the board and also Mass Housing. And I just wanted to, um, ask if these letters were being shared with Trudy?
So, so I can tell you that, uh, everything, uh, that we have is, since she is assisting us in crafting our response to Mass Housing, everything is being shared with her, and, um, and she is helping us, uh, prepare our comments and files to Mass Housing's, you know, request of us.
Great, thank you. Um, I think, just with trying to keep with the points, um, that you made, that, you know, those three kind of talking points that we are allowed to, uh, back on in terms of the 40B project, um, the proposed building height is really nearing Boston Buildings Code as a high-rise building. I mean, it's a structure of seventy feet in height. Um, this isn't even considering the vertical distance from the curb level, um, there's a significant grade change from Canton Ave to this lot, and each yard of the existing abutting homes will now border a massive, um, high-rise building in a suburban neighborhood. Um, and so I also want to bring up the, their, um, requirement for a two-lane road, which would actually be wider than what we have on Canton Ave, which they have on their plan. Um, I think that, as well as the parking lots abutting our yards, um, will require 24-hour lighting and 24-hour access, potentially probably, you know, three to 400 more residents. Um, I just think we need to definitely talk about how that can be minimized, um, that an entrance is now bigger than the main road that it's off of. Again, the traffic and safety concerns, um, with Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center, um, the schools, Milton Academy, Milton High School, the fire department, and the police department, um, and just the public access to, um, a bus stop, um, there's really no, um, public transportation in this area, so I just don't understand how, um, a lot of this new community is going to, um, get around, saying, I mean, I think they had suggested that there would only be 201 parking spots, um, and because most of this project isn't going to be affordable, I just can't think that we can't assume that some of these residents will have more than one vehicle, and I just don't understand where they think they're going to put those vehicles, especially if there's no public transportation as an alternative. Um, I think those are probably our, our top talking points at this point. Um, and then just, I think, mentioning, and, and I think this will come up at the zoning board appeal with, is the, the wetland, hundred-foot buffer zone that runs along the entire property. Um, I know that our home and, you know, a lot on Canton Ave and Gulliver and Elm and Wendell Park are all going to be affected, um, by changing, uh, the topography in that back, that lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nielsen, and that's actually something that we can comment on in our, our letter, the, the topography and the environmental resources, and so, so that's, that's part of the conceptual project design, the type of site, so we can comment on that a lot.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
We're going to ask you to mute, um, Nielsen's again, Elizabeth Janega, who is at 2874.
Yes, can you hear me?
Is that, is that Ms. Janega?
Yes, this is Elizabeth Janega. I live at 658 Canton Avenue. Uh, I have lived in Milton a little over seventeen years, and I have been in my current home going on eleven years. Um, I can say that I feel that the site for this proposal, as well as the design, are completely inappropriate. I read when I first received the proposal in detail, and quite frankly, um, I couldn't find anything appropriate about it. The comments that I have have nothing to do with 40B housing, it's irrelevant to me who would be living in that apartment complex. Um, I will say the scope, and I will reiterate, reiterate what Mr. Pugh said, um, the scope of that project, the size, the parking lots, the size of the driveway are completely inappropriate. This is a residential neighborhood, and that basically is a commercial building that they will be putting in there. And I want to emphasize, if the builder comes back and says, oh, I'll decrease it to, you know, 100 units, or 50 units, or 25 units, it'll be a townhouse complex or condo complex, I find all of that inappropriate for this particular location and the size of that lot. Um, I think putting in a parking lot and having cars coming in such that the, the lights will be going into the abutters homes morning and evening, completely inappropriate. The individuals that live on Holmes Lane have Winter Valley on one side of them, which essentially is an apartment complex or condo complex, and they will now have another complex, uh, on the other side. This is a residential neighborhood, um, across the street, we have lovely, largely single-family homes. On the side of the street that 648 Canton Avenue is, these are large pieces of property, wooded and with wetlands. Most of my property, or at least a good portion of my property, is wetlands. I am certainly not an expert on ecosystems or wildlife, but I cannot believe for one moment that having that many people, with that many cars, that much light, and that much noise is not going to impact our ecosystem and the wildlife here in Milton. And I think, I think the last meeting, someone said that we did have jurisdiction, or the town of Milton did, to come in and really, um, assess that.
Mm-hmm.
I think that it's not going to just affect our, quote, nocturnal animals, but down to the smallest bug. I think we need to really look at that. I will tell you, in terms of our ecosystem, it's been mentioned, you know, we have, um, creeks around here, a lot of people have problems with flooding. My son and I go out two times a year cleaning up the garbage on our private driveway. Um, we do it in late spring, or early spring, rather, as we just did now, and late fall. Within the past five weeks, we have filled six large outdoor black garbage bags, full of garbage from the woods, which will be abutting the, the, the new property, for the kids to come out here and drink. So it's, you know, any alcoholic bottle or can, lots and lots of water bottles, uh, sometimes the kids are nice, they put it in a garbage bag, a plastic garbage bag, and they leave it out there, um, but that's how much I fill, um, every year. I can't imagine having these rental properties there that I'm not going, we're not going to have the same problem. It's going to be disrespectful, people are just going to be throwing things in the woods, and that, that impacts the ecosystem, the wildlife. The last point of why it's completely inappropriate, in terms of the site, is the amount of traffic that we're going to have. I really find it insulting, and I would imagine that my neighbors would agree, for anybody to come in and propose the scale of this type of project, and it kind of imply that it's not in any way going to impact the traffic, or that it will minimally impact the traffic, okay? We are literally paralyzed here in the morning, we can't get out of our driveway, is bumper-to-bumper traffic both ways. I would imagine that the number of cars that will be in that complex could very well be double the number of actual units that are in that complex. That complex has one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, um, so I don't believe that, um, and, and my neighbor just mentioned, I think it's going to be a problem with parking, and particularly if people have guests, where are they going to park? The traffic, this area in Milton, this particular area, cannot handle that amount of traffic, can't handle that many more people, cannot handle that many more cars. Um, lastly, I just want to emphasize again, because I, I've seen things where people, the builder will come back and try and say, oh, we'll just decrease the scope of this. This is a residential neighborhood. That lot, which is a very oddly shaped lot, um, is basically like a sliver of land, even though it seems larger, it's like a sliver of land, and to try and put a, any type of apartment complex in it, that's not what that is for, it does not fit with the neighborhood, and it has multiple repercussions that I've already mentioned. And at the last meeting, one woman did mention that Milton needs to be proactive, and I, like I said, my comments are not based on 40B, I would be making these comments regardless of who would be moving in there, or trying to build. Um, but I think that if we have to have 40B pil, 40B housing, which we do, Milton needs to start looking where we can put that type of housing, where it has the least impact to the neighbors, the neighborhood at large, and our ecosystem slash wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Janega. Um, all right, Hillary, I'm going to ask you to, to mute Ms. Janega. All right, Hillary, I'm going to ask you to mute Ms. Janega and to unmute Lara Roach at 44 Holmes Lane.
Thank you, Mike. I'd also like to just start off by saying that, to kind of echo what Beth said, regardless of the type of housing, that doesn't matter to us. My husband actually grew up in Boston low-income housing, and he lived there for 25 years. And we are fully supportive of low-income housing opportunities across the town. We totally acknowledge the benefit it has on the community. So I'd like to start off by saying that. I think the main point that we do want to make, my husband and I, and my husband spoke at the last meeting as well, I do, we want to speak to how misleading the comparable properties are that were listed in the application. The application mentions a number of properties that they consider comps. And they do that in an attempt to justify the size and the location of the project. We have spent many hours reviewing, you know, these comparable properties. And my husband's actually in the industry, he works in construction management for a company that does projects all over the state. So he's very familiar with the, many of the comps that were listed in the application. In fact, one of the comps specifically in West Roxbury, he was part of that project. So he's very familiar with that. And that's listed as a comp, this West Roxbury project, when in fact, it's actually in Home Depot's parking lot on VFW Parkway. And that's considered a comp here. So I just, we want to call out that it's, you know, all of these comps, you know, none of them are in any way similar to the proposed project at 648 Canton Ave. Not one of the comps are jammed into a small, you know, quiet, modest neighborhood. The, all of the comps listed are in sensible locations, they're close to public transit and other town amenities, and they just make a whole lot more sense. My house would be now staring at a 350-foot-long wall if this project were approved. And it's, it just doesn't make sense in our neighborhood, the size of it, the scope of it, it doesn't make sense. And I think what's important, important also to call out is that Winter Valley is mentioned a handful of times throughout the application. And they sort of justify this project by saying, oh, Winter Valley is within 200 feet of the site. But I think the application really neglects to mention that Winter Valley is spread across many acres of land, many more than five. And it consists of smaller and separate residences that are no more than two stories high. And so my point is, Winter Valley is a nice community, it's a wonderful community, but it should not be used as a means to justify the monstrosity that has been proposed across the street from me. And I think that, you know, if this were to be approved, the project would be the clear outlier, not only in Milton, but, you know, in other surrounding communities. So we are just, the scope, the size and scope of the project is just clear, it clearly does not fit in with the community.
Thank you, Lara. Lara, can I ask you, I know in your letter you mentioned this, is the idea of the misleading comps, but if you have some specific backup for that, I don't know if I saw that, if you have some specific background, backup for that, that might be helpful, if you could send that.
Yes, we certainly can. I can have my husband go through each comp and send you guys some information on each one of them.
Yeah, I don't want to create work for him, but I know you mentioned in the letter, but it may be helpful if we had some.
Yep. We're more than happy to help in any way we can, so we will do so.
Thank you. All right, Hillary, if you could mute Ken and Lara Roach and unmute Joe Dolan at 5563. Mr. Dolan?
Yes, Michael, thank you. I live across from this project, and I'm not too familiar with the project itself. But I can tell you, they have a serious water problem on Canton Avenue. On heavy rainfalls, the water comes through the stone wall. The stone wall on Canton Avenue runs in front of this property, and water pours out of it, out of the wall, onto the road. And it's my belief, when they built the Indian Cliffs, they use the existing, I've been here since 1973, and they use the existing surface water pipes under the street. They didn't enlarge them. And they're going to have to dig up Canton Avenue, probably with the water coming in, say, from the Indian Cliffs and this new project. Manhole covers lift now at times. And when Mr. DeSalle was here, he put, he locked the manhole, to catch the drains, the water, surface water, the surface water covers. It flows down on Canton Avenue, down towards Wendell Park. The, there's water out underneath all that land, in that area. Canton Avenue at that point is very narrow. It's, it's not wide. And to have this traffic and this kind of a project, it's definitely, in my opinion, it's out of scale. It's like putting a factory. And with all due respect to the building, it's like putting a factory, I don't know, 100 yards in off the street, probably trying to hide it with trees. But you have to take into account the water, the surface water. You might have to put a big drain pipe, a much bigger drain pipe than what's there to carry that water underneath, which means digging up the whole Canton Ave, putting it down. Traffic is, I heard another person say, it's heavy, there are no two ways about it. It's heavy all over town, the road is narrow, the water problem is something you can't overlook. It does come out, and it flows right down, our drains can't carry it. The existing drains can't carry it in the heavy rainfall, and the water pours down, it just runs right down the street like a river. And empties somewhere down around Wendell Park, I believe. So that has to be looked at also, increasing the size of the drain pipe under the street. I'm not sure, it might be a five or six-inch pipe, and I think they're going to need a bigger one. But that's something that your engineering department probably knows about. But it's, the water is the big thing, the traffic. And the big thing, of course, it's like putting a factory in the field, I think. Traffic there is very heavy, Mike. And, well, as I say, the water pours out right now with no property, no building there at all. It just pours out in a heavy rainfall. And I'm sure your public works people know that. Surface water, because there's not enough room in the pipe to take it. The road is very narrow, we know that, it's obvious, you drive up there, I'm sure you go by many times. And to put a project that size in there, it's just, it overwhelms the area, it's too big. So I think I'll end up, I'll just say, the water is a major problem. The building itself is like, it's out of scale, out of size for this area. Traffic is heavy, and the road, and the road is really narrow at that spot, it is. So it's something that should be, it's not appropriate for that area. And that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe, that's very helpful. All right, so we've heard from the five, I'm going to ask now, to see if there's anyone else, who may have come on the line, or may have changed their mind, and may now want to, they want to, may now want to participate and say something on this. Again, you can send us emails, you know, online. If you go to the website, you can send an email to Mr. Dennehy. All those comments are being circulated among the board and with our consultant, Judy Barrett, in our effort to prepare these comments. So Hillary, and we're going to go through the same process, which is Hillary's going to unmute all the lines, and I'm going to ask for any additional people who want to speak on the 648 Canton Ave 40B comment letter. So Hillary, if you could unmute all the lines.
Go ahead, folks.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak on 648 Canton Ave?
Yes, my name's Robin O'Neill at 30 Holmes Lane.
Ms. O'Neill. And you are, yeah, we have you, yeah. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going once? Going twice? All right, I'm going to ask Hillary going, gone, I'm going to ask Hillary to mute all the lines except for Ms. O'Neill's, and that's R.S. O'Neill.
Ms. O'Neill, you can proceed when you are ready.
Thank you. My name's Robin O'Neill. My husband, Stephen, and I have lived at 30 Holmes Lane for 26-plus years. My biggest issue, as I stated in my letter to the selectmen and so forth that I submitted this morning, is the whole proposal, never mind that it is way oversized for the neighborhood and out of character, is some of the representations they made in the proposal are trying to make it sound like this is so wonderful, when in fact, it's, several of them aren't true. As my neighbors at 640 Canton Avenue said, this double-lane road more than doubles the entrance, and yet they're making it sound like, oh, nothing's going to be changed from Canton Avenue. They also state that from the architectural renderings on the project, that there's all these mature trees that are going to block the view from neighbors and Canton Avenue, when in fact, on the sidewalk on February 25th, we were told, nope, that tree's gone, that tree's gone, that tree's gone, that tree's gone. And basically, what would be left was anything on the abutters' lots, that would be the buffer zone. And I can go through, and you have all of my objections to this, my husband's in my objection, and what it is, is they're misrepresenting how this is going to affect the area. And that, because they're coming in with so many inaccuracies, and I'm, that's probably the kindest way I could put it, without, you know, calling them something else, it just puts a taint on the whole intent of this project. They're using a law that is meant to be very helpful to the community and the state and, you know, the general area, excuse me, and they're using it to put in an oversized project onto an unsuitable neighborhood. I have big concerns about the water. Water was flowing over the stone wall at 640 Canton Avenue after the rain last night. And so it's not a, it's not a one-time occurrence. As Mr. Dolan said, there's always water running over that hill. We all have some pumps in our homes up here on the hill. It looks, you know, you'd think that wouldn't be the case, but the water table must be high if it's running all summer long. So again, my biggest objection, or like my gut feeling against this project, in addition to what everyone else has said, is that they're trying to like sugarcoat this project, and it's so wonderful, and it's going to be so great for the town of Milton, when in fact, they want to build a very big, high-profit building on an inappropriate lot. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. O'Neill. Okay, that's very helpful. This is the second time that we have, we've had public in-person comment. We'll continue to accept emails and other comments. We're going to try to get a draft out and publish a draft of our response letter on this. The response, or the comments on this, along with the Blue Hill Ave, are due on April 15th. We have continued to ask Mass Housing for an extension, and they have continued, even since the COVID-19 crisis, they have continued to disregard the fact that we are in the midst of a global pandemic, and to continue to insist that nothing has changed, and we should just continue to proceed and to meet the deadline that was set before the global pandemic came upon us. So we'll continue to try to see if Mass Housing will be a little bit more reasonable. But if they're not, we're just going to, we're just going to move forward. But we'll continue to do that, so. Any other comments or questions from the members? Hillary, if you could, if you could delete, if you could unmute the members, Tony and Richard and Katie and Melinda, any other comments or questions?
This is Melinda Collins. I wanted to thank the people who spoke this evening, and just to note the exemplary way in which you addressed the points that really can help us shape the letter. Just, I just very much appreciate your point and the way that you made them, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Richard, if I could speak for a second.
You went into, oh, there you are. Go ahead, Richard.
So just, just a couple of points. With regard to the water issue, as someone who was a resident of the location at the intersection of Highland Street and Canton Ave for most of the past three and a half decades, as Mr. Dennehy knows from his short time here, the water issue is a real issue. The police station, since it built that emergency operations center, which was a massive dollar investment from the federal government, has seen at least three significant floods that have caused thousands upon thousands of dollars of damage that Mr. Ritchie knows all too well. I think that the EOC in the lower level has ripped out completely three times just in the past five years. So the water issue is a true issue. The last point that I want to bring up is with regard to the specific developer. And I know no one's really touched on it, but to do a little bit of research on this developer is, and I get, you know, that they're using 40B as their leverage to build this, is they've never done anything like this. This is almost like, if you look at their history and what they do, they develop single-family homes. They've never done a massive 40B project like this in a community like ours. This is their first time even attempting such thing, which, just from the way that the application is worded and the things that they cite, shows their lack of experience. It's almost like, this is, this is a case where someone needs a quadruple bypass surgery, and we're bringing a podiatrist to try and do it. And should it be built in the way that they're proposing, all of the things that the residents that Mrs. Collins referred to, who articulated tonight, are absolutely true. I mean, this is so far outside the scope of something for the character or nature of that neighborhood. And I think part of our comment should be the fact that this developer has virtually zero experience in this field, and yet is coming and proposing something of this magnitude and this size in the type of neighborhood that they're proposing to build in. And so it's just, I know it's not a fatal bullet, but I think it's an important, it's an important asset. Unlike other, you know, developers we've dealt with who have a history in this, in this expertise, or in this type of development, here we're dealing with a developer who not only is just coming into our community, but is coming into this field completely, never ever having done that before. So that's just, I just want to make note of that, and somehow, and when we talk with Judy in shaping our comments, that we should, we should, we should make note of that. And I thank you for your time and allowing me to comment on that.
Thank you, Richard. Any other comments or questions from the members?
Mr. Chair, if I might, Mike Dennehy?
Mike, yes, please.
Yeah, so we had tasked all of the department heads coming up with comments and submitting them. Due to the surrounding circumstances, we had set the deadline for March 19th. That has come and passed. We are expecting all, and we have received most already, we're expecting all by the end of this week.
Okay. All right, that'll, that'll be helpful, and then we can, we can get a draft out, hopefully far enough in advance of the April 15th date, if we don't get an extension. Anything else? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Thank you all for your participation, and as Melinda said, for your help and for your very helpful comments. And we'll continue to move forward on this and try to prepare a letter that integrates and synthesizes all the comments that we've received, both in writing and at the public hearing. So thank you all. Next, item eight is a discussion approval of a letter on 40B. Well, that objection from the members, I'd like to move to item nine, because I, we have our audit committee and our auditors here. If we could, if we want to move on to item nine, which is the audit management, FY2019 Audit Management Letter, I'll ask Hillary to unmute the audit committee and our auditors.
Mr. Chair, I have Craig Peacock, our audit partner, Amy Dexter, town accountant, Chris Trachis, member of the audit committee, and Kathy White, chair of the audit committee.
All right.
I think there is also, this is Kathy, there are three other members, I think, of the audit committee on hold as well.
I see Brian Burns as well. Hi, Brian.
Mr. Burns, you are unmuted now.
Thank you.
Carolyn Ferguson and Michael Seton, I think, are also on.
Yes, this is Carolyn, I'm on, thank you.
Okay, great.
Hi, and this is Craig Peacock with Powers &amp; Sullivan.
Yeah, and I think I will proceed, as Craig will, you know, as the independent auditor, will just bring us, you know, quickly through summary of the highlights of the financial statements for June 30, 2019, and, you know, any comments he has around that, and then we can move on to the management letter comments, which is particular area for the audit committee, and then the committee members, myself can comment after that, but we'll, like, you know, Craig give the summary of his report of the financial statements they prepared, as well as the management letter comment.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Peacock, you go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Craig Peacock, the audit partner with Powers &amp; Sullivan, and we're discussing the 2019 audit. I would like to start off by saying the audit went very well this year. We had a really great package put together for us. I specifically like to thank the town's town accountant, Amy Dexter, who is clearly always takes sort of control of that process and really makes sure that her department and all other financial departments are ready and have the information we need. The town received an unmodified opinion on their financial statements, which is the best opinion you can receive. Responses to our audit inquiries from the various departments were received timely. Happy to report that we did not have any permanent adjustments to the general ledger to give to the town accountant to make. And as we discussed, the rest of the results, you'll see that there are no significant internal control issues, meaning material weaknesses or significant efficiencies. Some of the quick financial highlights, budgeturally, the town's fund balance went up about, just about $90,000 during 2019, and you budgeted close to $2 million of various transfers, of which the vast majority of that relates to capital. So strong collections and controlling your costs essentially allowed the replenishment of your fund balance, or we could say that we didn't reuse our reserves to balance the budget ultimately, which is positive. The town also has three stabilization funds, a capital stab, a regular stabilization, and a roadway stabilization, all of which had increases this year. The most significant being a $400,000 increase to the regular stabilization fund. As a result, your fund-based fund balance, general fund fund balance, increased approximately $860,000 this year, which was under GAZB 54, those include the stabilization funds. So that was both operations and the increases in the stabilization funds. And for 2019, the town's debt service remained a pretty consistent 3.7% of overall general fund budget. Your real estate and personal property commitment increased a little over 3%, which is your levy limit of two and a half plus new growth. Overall, I would suggest that the audit of the financials went very well, and we have met with the audit committee to essentially go through the figures and answer any and all questions that they may have had. I'm going to move to the report on federal award programs, which is a quick one. The town spent $2.5 million of federal funds during fiscal 19. As a result, we were required to audit the special education cluster, which accounted for 54% of those federal expenditures. And as a result, we, the report also has an unmodified opinion, and there are no findings and no question costs. Ultimately, it leaves us with the management letter. The management letter had four comments that carried over from the prior year, two of which are completely resolved, one of which is essentially 90% or more resolved and may be resolved to this day, just getting all departments to use the new purchase order system. So there's been a definite progress on the various comments. One of the previous comments surrounding cash reconciliation, as well as our new comment that relates to tailings, to me, they are sort of, not one in the same, but they both revolve around the reconciliation of cash. This is something that we've talked about for a few years now, and it's important, I think, to note that the audit committee also asked if we could do a sort of a meet with the treasurer's office and understand the cash reconciliation procedures, take a look at segregation of duties, the timeliness of their reconciliations, and the integrity of the support to their reconciling items and that type of thing.
Craig, this is Kathy White. It may be worth mentioning that a year ago, or a year-plus ago, in connection with the June 2018, that look you're talking about was, you know, the town hired you to do additional agreed-upon procedures with respect to the items you're talking about, and look at the process in the treasurer's office. So it was, you know, a formal review of the activity there.
Absolutely, thank you. Very true. And so I think in summary, to summarize the agreed-upon review of the cash procedures, as well as the management letter comments, from a financial statement standpoint, the issues that we have run into within the cash reconciliation process and the variances that we were unable to substantiate and such, did not rise to a level of materiality that caused us to have to issue a material weakness or significant deficiency. However, that does not mean that it cannot rise to that level in the future. I think a way to summarize both the independent review, as well as the management comment, is that, in my opinion, the treasurer's office is essentially reconciling their cash. There are accounts that do not appear to be reconciled each and every month, and/or the town is utilizing a sophisticated cash book program, which also appears as not being utilized in a timely manner. So in my opinion, I feel that although cash, again, from an audit standpoint, was not materially misstated, the treasurer's office is looking and reconciling cash more on a macro level, and what I feel that both the accounting office and the treasurer sort of need to work together to determine is to get down into the weeds, if you will. The reconciliation of cash on a monthly basis amongst your financial departments should involve understanding reconciling items, not seeing reconciling items that carry month to month to month or across fiscal years. We all know reconciling our own accounts, essentially, most items drop off within, you know, the next cycle. If they don't, they usually should be investigated. I think a better understanding of timeliness and cutoff in the treasurer's office, and understanding that you can't go back and change things that have already been reconciled without a complete understanding of all parties involved and such. I mean, in summary, you know, that's kind of where we've ended up with cash. I think that essentially, it's materially reconciled for financial statement purposes, but I think there is definite significant work to do in order to properly substantiate all reconciling items and make sure there's a timely process to update the cash book and provide the accounting office on a monthly basis with what they need to assure that they can reconcile with the treasurer's book balance of cash. And in summary, that's kind of, I could go into more detail, or I can answer any questions that there may be.
Kathy, this is Mike. Do you want to, do you want to ask the audit committee if they want to say anything first before our board asks any questions, or?
Yeah, maybe I'll just make a little color commentary around the discussions we've had in, you know, in January when we met, because I think there's a little bit of frustration on the audit committee that, you know, we did some, we had the agreed-upon procedures last year, didn't make a difference for the 630-19 year-end. We've had some discussions, and obviously, we're creeping up very quickly to the 630-2020 year-end, and I'm not certain we're any better position to, you know, for the reconciliations to be in any better position for this year-end. We did have discussions in January with, and I'm not certain if Jim McCullough is on the phone at all, if he wants to participate in this discussion, but had discussions with the treasurer, town accountant, yourself, you know, talking about what are the possibilities for, you know, how is this going to be fixed? Because, you know, for multiple years, we haven't, you know, gotten a correction to this, this comment just continues to linger, and it's different issues, different fact pattern, but same issue year after year. So I think the, you know, that frustration we talked about in January, is there a way to, Jim was going to pursue Unibank, which is, you know, sort of the online payment system, is there some other tool which he thought was available that will help him reconciling that? Amy Dexter thought that between herself and Jim, can they somehow train all the other departments that are feeding information into the treasurer's office to provide better information so they can do a better reconciliation, do better work around that? And in fairness, people probably need to be trained and taught exactly what they need to do and provide, and how to do cutoff at the end of a month. So that was, you know, possible game plan. I'm not certain there has been a lot of progress on those, you know, this winter, as we're heading into the June of 2020 year-end. That's sort of, this is sort of a post, you know, year-end discussion of the June of 2019, which is getting a little old at this point, but of that year-end. But just looking ahead to where we might end up at this year-end, do we have an ability to get a plan and get things fixed up before year-end, so we don't have this comment again, yet again, next year?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
This is Jim McCullough. We did get some software fixed from Unibank to address the problem, and a lot of the problem has to do with the clearing of a check in a credit card, where a credit card clears in two days, check clears in three days, at the end of each month. You can never snap a truck line to get it exactly right. And we rolled it out to the park and rec department, and it has worked very well. But on March 7th, Unibank just updated the software, so I'm going to try it again this month, see if we can square it up, then we're going to roll it out to the other departments. As far as the tailings go, we are finishing up with the tailings for '15, '16, and '17. All the letters have gone out, we're just waiting for a few more people to respond, get the money back in their hands, and then we will be writing that off probably by the end of next month. So we're working towards solving these problems as we speak.
Kathy, I just want to make sure the audit committee has full opportunity to make any comments or questions, and then I'll open it up to the members of the select board.
Yeah, my one comment would be that that's good to hear there's progress. We should probably, you know, reconnect before year-end to make sure. There's the Unibank side, there was also that, you know, train everyone else as the next part of the game plan. But I think that, you know, that would be good if there's progress, as I said before, this has been a lingering issue, so that would be a good thing. I'll ask the other members, who I think are all unmuted, if they would like to make any comments. I'm not certain, I know Michael Seton had dropped off, and if he came back on, so I don't know if Hillary has unmuted him or not.
He's on, he just went on, he's off mute, so.
Okay. Any other committee members have comments?
Chris Trachis, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, oh, good, hi, everybody, thank you. No, I just want to say that, you know, we did have a meeting with the committee in January, and, I mean, it was just, you know, there was a very positive tone to the meeting, very cooperative tone, so, you know, maybe there's comments that might seem like they're getting a little on the, you know, old side, but it's really not due to any lack of, you know, cooperation or interest on anybody, on anyone's part. I just wanted to make that statement, that's all. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so the tailings should be coming off this year. I mean, we're pretty much cut up with that. We did have a little problem with one of our employees was out sick for quite a long time, and she is back, and things are going along now.
Sure, Michael Seton here, another audit committee member, and look, just have appreciated Kathy's leadership here for the last couple of years. I'm just in my second year on the committee, but would certainly agree with the comments. You know, I think generally, you know, I sit on a number of other audit committees, and generally, when, you know, you do have comments, you like to see progress and improvement, so, you know, I certainly would be in the camp to, you know, looking forward to when we can move forward to resolve it. Sometimes it can take, you know, especially as Jim noted, there's a new system coming into place, and sometimes on some comments, you know, if there's technology that needs to be addressed, you know, to get at challenges where you may have, you know, this is a small team that Jim has, that certainly can be constrained, especially if you have an illness, you know, where technology can help, you know, make things more efficient. It can take longer than what, maybe a year to solve a challenge, but I think we'd be in the mode now where we would hope, within the coming months, you know, to resolve this.
Yeah, I was hoping to take care of most of it this month, but as we all know, I've got one person in every day this week, out of the four I have, so it's been a little tough the last two weeks.
Mike, this is Brian Burns. I would agree with Kathy's approach in trying to get together before the end of the year. The one concern I would have is that, you know, in today's environment, where we're doing everything, conference call and Zoom meetings, it's a little bit more difficult to get the real feel of how things are going, and I would imagine from Jim's perspective would be somewhat of a challenge to get his staff and the rest of the people who need to be trained, trained, so it would be good to have a check-in before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think we should set something up for May, where things probably, hopefully get back to normal.
You are an optimist.
I agree.
We can only hope.
But we can remotely, you know, meet and discuss.
Yeah, okay. And my door is always open. I mean, if you want to come by and sit down and go over things, that's fine also.
Well, Jim, your doors not really, the doors to town hall aren't open these days, but...
Knock them, I'm on the first floor, knock on the window, I'll let you in.
All right. Any other comments from the audit committee members? If not, we'll ask for comments or questions from the select board members. Carrie, are you all set, are you ready to move on to the select board members? Kathy, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think we're ready to move on.
Great. Comments or questions from the members of the select board?
I have a few, this is Katie. So I want to come back to the issue of the reconciliations. This is, this is a comment that has carried for a number of years. In my view, we need to resolve this immediately, so I agree with Kathy, I don't want to see this show up on another annual management letter. I think we need some concrete steps put in place. I think May is too late, I think we need to act on this sooner than May, and we can do that through telephone conferences, and I'm sure the town administrator would make himself and his staff available to participate in any way that they can be able, but this has been on our management letter, this has been a comment... been a comment for a number of years, and we need to get this one resolved.
What was on, what was on the comment, previous comment, it was the vendor and the payroll, which is not an issue anymore, they're always squared up now.
Yeah, but I'm just reading the comment, it's, you know, I think I can hear the auditors' frustration that this has been an issue for a number of years. Mr. Peacock, I think I heard you say, but could you correct me if I'm wrong, that while this hasn't accelerated to the level of a material weakness or the other standard that you mentioned, at some point it could, if it's not resolved or if it's a dollar amount, what would give rise to this being accelerated?
I think, yes, thank you, yes, that would be a very fair statement. It would sort of, from an auditor's judgment standpoint, it could be both realistically. We could look at materiality of unsubstantiated reconciling items, or, you know, whatever other type of variances might exist, and if the materiality level rises, then yes, that could lead to a significant deficiency. However, also, the pure lack of response and implementing any procedures to sort of move forward and try to mitigate these control issues and such, you know, could ultimately lead to a significant deficiency if the town financing, you know, it never acts upon it at all. So I think it's sort of, it both could dovetail and cause the matter to rise to significant deficiency and then a material weakness.
Let me ask a question, is there a policy or procedure that we could put in place that might help here, or is this really a matter of working through just internal, interdepartmental issues and working with Unibank? Will that solve the problem, or do we need to do something more?
Well, I tend to think, based on what I've seen over the last couple of years, that I think it's a lot of what you mentioned. I think there's a lot of, I don't think there's just a one policy that you're going to put in place to say, have all the departments make timelier turnovers that's suddenly going to solve the issue. I think it's just gaining a little bit of education on maybe the treasurer's staff side of the understanding of cutoff and the timeliness, you know, of getting our deposits in and our information from and to various departments. So I think I agree with your statement that it's more of developing internal control policies and procedures surrounding the reconciliation of cash and every aspect of what that means, and essentially involving all financial departments that in any way collect or remit funds to the town. Everybody needs to be on the same page, all departments should be, you know, acting in the same manner, hence, you know, maybe weekly turnovers, you know, timeliness of information flow, that type of thing. Also, as Jim mentioned, working with Unibank and understanding their software and such to be able to review and prove the reconciliations of the major accounts with Unibank and such. So I, I don't think we're, I don't think the town is up against what I'll call an incredible hurdle, yes, it's been here for a while. I think it's a matter of just being able to put in the time and come up with some new procedures that will allow us to understand our reconciliations and the process and make sure things are done timely. I think that really should help.
Hey Craig, this is Jim. I, with the park and rec department, what I, the plan we have worked out with them, which I want to roll out to all the other departments, is on the first day of the month, I print a copy of the Unibank statement and I give it to that department, and they go in with the software and they can see which payments were cleared that month. Because right now it comes in a lump sum, so you don't know which payment cleared, what part of that, what part of that lump sum cleared and what part did not. So Bonnie's been very good, she's gone in and she's squared it up, and as of today, it's the perfect balance.
Geez, I mean, that's definitely a step in the right direction, and that will, you know, that was one of your hurdles of dealing with some of these unknown deposits and such. And so I think that's a great step in the right direction of being able to understand and have a known, or have a name associated, if you will, with some of these reconciling items, you know, and a known value, what they represent. So I think that's a definite step in the right direction.
And also with the water and sewer department, they were doing turnovers periodically, it's like twice a month. I have them doing a turnover now daily on the Unibank side.
Okay, okay.
So that should, that should.
You know, daily is great, I don't know the level of their, you know, I would say daily to weekly at the most realistically. If daily works, and again, you know, if you have a department that collects some, you know, let's use police department, they sell a few pistol permits, you know, and they have 10 bucks, I'm not so sure I would worry about them every day, but it sounds like water and sewer is probably a far more activity in which daily would make much more sense and help your reconciliation process.
Yeah, with the water, the water and sewer, they also have the stormwater drain, which is another account that they're also doing daily, but the stormwater drain comes to an end, actually, comes to an end tomorrow. So we'll be able to square that up into this month to the penny.
Okay.
So we're getting there.
But I suggest, rather than the incremental, you know, the small incremental, I think, it sounds like we need a holistic calendar to say, this is what all the departments need a calendar, say when they need to report into you, how frequently, at the end of a month, do you have a calendar when your reconciliations are done, and then there's a coordination with the town accountant that needs to happen, you know, every month. And I think that's what's been lacking, is sort of that cadence to it, to say, okay, this is just how we operate, this is when things are going to be done, rather than, you know, I appreciate people are very busy, but, you know, things might go a month, they might, you know, it might be two months before things start to get reconciled. So I don't know if it's some coordination between the town administrator, between town accountant and treasurer's office to say, what is the calendar, let's train everybody up for what they should be delivering to you, get the understanding of the Unibank system, and make sure there's a calendar that everyone can live with and pass off the right information at the right time, so, you know, this can get resolved. And I appreciate Katie, the statement not to wait until, you know, May to have a discussion on this, because we'll be at year end again before you know it.
Yeah, that's really the concern here, and I'm wondering what we might be able to do to help, so I, Craig, or Kathy or Jim, you know, would our board putting in place some kind of a policy, or, and maybe, maybe is a proper procedure manual, and I'm wondering if there's a best practices policy that Craig might be able to recommend for us to look at to help this situation, because obviously we want this off this management letter as soon as we can get it off.
Yeah, well, what I'm hoping the solution is, with a deal with park and rec, the first of the month, I want to get each department out a statement on what's left in their account, and then they can go in, they can use this piece of software to square up with the software on what cleared by the last day of the month. If it was a credit card, you know, they may have put it in on the last day of the month, but it might not clear until the second of the next month. The same thing with the checks. So I'm hoping this is the fix that we're looking for.
All right, and Craig, best practices policies, are there any that you can recommend to us, or is this so unique from town to town that it really wouldn't be helpful?
Well, you know, it's a tricky question to answer, because I have to also agree with your latter statement, that it is very unique in many ways from community to community that we go to. And it's, I really like what Kathy mentioned a few moments ago, having a concrete calendar of when things between treasury and accounting occur, and when departments are required to, you know, get their information to both treasury and accounting. You know, every community we go to is handled a little bit differently that makes it hard to, I mean, the reconciliation of cash is essentially, you know, the reconciliation of cash, but the process, we do see it very different, and I think it's probably somewhat unique community to community, and it really all involves information flow, the timeliness thereof, and the interaction between your various department heads and your two main financial offices being treasury and accounting. And I actually really think that something like what Kathy mentioned, having a concrete schedule to say, you know, once, maybe giving Jim a little time to get the software up, get his people working, try the couple of things he's mentioning with the departments, and if he's able to start nailing down his monthly recons, which would simplify, or not simplify, but make the process more efficient and effective between him and the town accountant's office, you know, then, once you have that process and things are working, the development of a calendar to say, here's when I'm going to get this to you, and here's when I need you to get this to me, and include all financial and or departments that collect monies in any way, shape, or form, and adhere all to the same policies, I think that that really should help a lot going forward.
So, this is Michael, and look, maybe just to simplify this and put a finer point on it, to the question of a best practice, you know, I would treat this for incoming cash or outgoing cash. On incoming cash, if we have a difference between what's in our books and from what we expect, the best practice is that every month, you have a detailed understanding of what those differences are, and that there's a process in place to follow up. And the same would go for cash payments going out the door, right? If we've written a check somewhere, moved money somewhere, and that hasn't cleared our bank, that on a monthly basis, there's a detailed understanding of what those differences are, and there's a process in place to actively follow up on those differences. You know, I think what we've been finding out for a few years is there just simply hasn't been a detailed understanding month to month of what are the differences, and there has not been an active process to follow up on those differences. And so, you know, again, I think to oversimplify, that's what needs to be rectified, and Kathy and Craig's comments, I think, are on point.
I think that was a great summary, Michael, thank you.
We need, and just make sure we move forward as soon as possible, having those conversations so that we're addressing it, if we can, Kathy, in this fiscal year, even though we're getting close to year end. I had two questions regarding the financials, I don't know if we want, if the chair wants to stay on the management letter first before we even move to anything else?
No, I think, I think we can, Katie, you go ahead, because the presentation was put together, so it was together, so I think the questions committee can have us, go ahead.
Right, just two things then, for Mr. Peacock on the financials, and one is mainly for the residents of the town who might be viewing or listening to the meeting, if you could talk a little bit about our OPEB liability so that people understand what the issue is and what the unfunded liability that's out there is, and how are we doing in comparison to other towns that you're auditing?
So, the OPEB liability that we're referring to is governed by GASB 75, and it's essentially been here, you know, since the town of Milton existed, opened its doors for business. What it is, is essentially health benefits that are provided to retiree, you know, to our retirees, once they retire from their service with the town of Milton. And currently, on the finance, so GASB 75 has been in play, this is probably, this is the third year now, and what it required was the actual quantifying and recording of the liability on the town's full accrual financial statements, which has never been required before. So now what's happening is, the town's required to have an actuarial valuation for this OPEB liability, and then an update every two years in order to essentially quantify the liability for these benefits that will be paid in the future. Currently, there was $166 million liability recorded as of June 30, 2019. That was a $39 million increase from a year, or essentially a year ago at fiscal, the end of fiscal 18. Primarily, the reason for those increases are each time the actuary will compute and produce a new valuation, they look at their, the assumptions that were used, and make sure that, you know, they still reflect current trends and circumstances in the marketplace. In this case, the trend has been across the state of Massachusetts to lower the discount rate, which the town of Milton's discount rate was lowered approximately three quarters of a percent, as well as there was some changes in the method of determining the liability in relation to teachers was updated. So those changes essentially resulted in the $39 million increase in that liability. As of June 30, 2019, the town has a million, we'll call it a million one and some change in the trust fund put aside related to these benefits. Currently, there is no mandate in the state of Massachusetts for communities to fund this liability. Amongst our client base, I'm going to suggest that I can think of two or three clients that have 30 to 50, 60 million dollars put aside. They are by far not the norm. I would suggest that the town of Milton is higher than some and lower than others, you know, amongst your peer group. What I would suggest is, based on our discussions with the rating agencies and such, and what type of weight they've been giving, and how much they look at this other post-employment benefit liability, over the last couple of years, they've really started to look at it a lot more, and compare to the town of Milton's peers and say, you know, and look at, what are we doing, what is the town doing in comparison to other communities? And, you know, this year, we put into town, put in an additional 80, just about 83,000 over and above the necessary benefit payments, you know, it earned some investment income and such, so, again, a million one, we have $166 million liability, you know, it's where we're not even 1%, so, barely. We've started.
Craig, is this evaluated in connection with the pension liability as well, and the funding of that, that we're commenting on?
Well, as far as the rating agencies go?
Yeah.
Yeah, the rating agencies also do look at the net pension liability, which is GASB 68, that also increased to about 25 and a half million on this year's financial statements, again, for very similar type plan changes in the new valuation. The main difference is that the pension liability is required to be funded, and so what many communities have been doing in working with the rating agencies, they're trying to determine, can we commit our pension funding over to OPEB, you know, once we've met our unfunded liability on the pension side? And we've noticed that when a town, or a community, a town in the case of the town of Milton, takes an actual vote and says, yes, we're going to, we have a plan and we're going to utilize our pension appropriation for OPEB in the future, the actuaries are then allowed to use what we call, they can give some credence to that policy, and they will utilize what we call a blended rate, which can help to minimize the impact or the increase in that year's OPEB liability. So they definitely do look at both liabilities significantly, more so in the last couple of years than going forward. They're really trying to get a feel for how is, how is the town addressing them, what policies do we have in place to mitigate and, you know, work to alleviate the increases in these liabilities, and I don't think anybody has the crystal ball right now, most communities that we're working with are trying to determine. Most communities that we're working with are trying to determine, how can we fund this liability at more than a token funding on a yearly basis, if you will, to actually decrease or, you know, have an impact on the growing OPEB liability? You know, so in summary, the town has a significant liability. We've started to put some money aside. It's, as far as most communities in Massachusetts go, from our client base at least, I would suggest, you know, that you're probably right in the middle of the pack as far as the amount of assets put aside. There are clearly a few, you know, we can probably all think of who they might be that have a lot put aside, and then there are some that haven't even started yet. So, I would say the town of Milton's probably square in the middle with the amount of assets that you have put aside in the trust as of June 19.
Great. And you mentioned a vote by the communities. Our, it's been our collective view for a long time that we would eventually move our, the money that we're putting every year into our pension liability, that will move over to the OPEB liability once we fully fund the pension liability. But we don't have a policy in place about that, and we don't have any official vote. Are you referring to just a policy when you said a vote, or should be a vote of a particular board?
Well, what we have seen in discussing with the various, with essentially Moody's and S&amp;P, is the communities that we've seen them be able to give some credence to the decision of utilizing the pension appropriation and moving that towards OPEB in the future, they are generally looking for more than, let's say, just somebody's opinion on the phone call with the Reagan Agency. So, generally, yes, what I've seen, they're looking for maybe a policy approved by the select board that says, you know, or, one community I have, they have a specific OPEB subcommittee. And they meet periodically to simply discuss how to address the OPEB. And they developed a policy, and part of it was that, you know, the pension appropriation should move over once it's fully funded. They got their select board to approve that policy, and they used that approved policy in their next rating call, and they were able to get both, you know, an uptick amongst all the other factors that they look at. And also, the actuary was able to utilize the policy and develop more of a blended rate, which helped to mitigate the increase in the liability on a year after year basis.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful, because we've talked about putting a policy in place at our finance committee meetings. So, that's probably more of an incentive for us to try to move that forward sooner rather than later. My last question was just about the stabilization funds that you mentioned. And you mentioned we have three of them, the general stabilization, the capital stabilization, and roadway. I've been talking with someone in another town whose community put forward a special education stabilization fund to kind of help them in years when Fed costs drowned. Have you seen that in many communities? Or have you seen any other types of stabilization funds that are particularly helpful that we should consider?
Well, so, well, let's think about the special education for a moment. The legislation came out a few years back, allowed communities to start, just as you mentioned, put some monies aside for when the special education costs, which we all know can grow out of control. And we had some money aside to assist with that. I have to be honest, throughout our client base, yes, we have seen some of those type of stabilization funds arise, specifically the special education. I would suggest that they don't end up really ending with a lot of funding. They're very nominal stabilization funds. I've seen them 50 grand, a couple hundred grand, you know, every dollar helps. But they're certainly not funds that I'm seeing build up millions of dollars to assist with special ed costs. So, it doesn't seem, in my opinion, based on our client base, it does not seem to be a concept that is really taking off. As far as other types of stabilization funds, more so on the city side, and especially cities in and around, such as the town of Milton, in and around the Boston area, but some cities that are having a lot of infrastructure growth and such. For instance, the city of Somerville, as an example, with all the different growth that's going on, all the different contractors and federal and state agencies involved, there's been all sorts of, you know, sometimes in order to, they'll say, we'll give X amount of money for road projects once we get our building up to mitigate traffic in this area. And so, they've set up all sorts of specific stabilization funds. A lot of communities now that have voted the approval of cannabis sales have been using some of those, the proceeds, to set up stabilization funds for public safety and health-related concerns in the community going forward. Really, these days, we see communities start a stabilization fund for almost any purpose that's allowable, that they, that is felt of importance in the community, and that could deem the need of significant resources, and, you know, that the community and its members feel is important to start saving for. And really, I have communities that have probably 10 or 12 different stabilization funds, and some that have none. So, it's, again, something that's very specific to different communities. But you, there are a lot of different stabilization funds available. But again, even just your general stabilization fund, the difference is, is that general stabilization fund, the select board could vote to utilize those funds for operations if need be, whereas some specifically funded stabilization funds that are voted for a very specific purpose, or the revenues for such come from a very specific purpose to then be used for very specific purposes, could never be essentially revoted or have their restrictions changed to be used for the operating budget. So, it's sometimes, that's why we see communities try to also mitigate building up what we'll call the general stabilization too large, and they may try to break off different buckets that are a little bit more committed, if you will, to certain types of obligations.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the members, the select board members? Melinda?
Mr. Chair, this is Richard. I just want to say thank you to Kathy and her entire committee. And I'll consult everyone who, clearly, Jim, everyone who works so very hard on this, trying to maintain a healthy fiscal picture for our community. It's not my expertise, but as a former department head and one who sits here now, I do understand the challenges that they deal with every year. And I definitely want to give a shout out to Amy, who has been very quiet tonight, but who works so diligently for our community every day.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate all the work that the treasurer and the town accountant and town administrator have spent with us and all the committee members. So, thank you.
Melinda, did you have something?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you as well. And I think that the calendar and the coordinated procedures are definitely are the way to go. And I'd really like it if, as Katie said, this needs to be rectified quickly. And I understand that perhaps all of the software may not be completely sorted out, and it may take a little time. But I think that it's not too early to get the calendar and the procedures in place. And I appreciate that Jim and Amy are able to work together on this, and appreciate any help that the audit committee can give and support. Because, you know, we need support to do something that bans so many departments. So, if we could get an update from Mike Dennehy on this, if they would be in contact, I would really appreciate that, because I'd like to give any kinds of resources that are needed. Something might be identified, and it would be good to know if we can help. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Peacock. It was a great report, and I appreciate the context that you provided about the good job that we're doing of managing our expenses to match the revenue that we have at hand.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, any other comments or questions from the members? Richard, do you have something?
Oh, I'm fine. Thank you very much. And again, to Mr. Peacock, everyone, thank you very much for just a very thorough presentation tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let me reiterate, Powers and Sullivan's are represented by Mr. Peacock. They've done a great job. Amy Dexter, our town accountant, Jim McCollum as well for their time in the rapid. And our volunteers from the audit committee. This is not easy work. This is difficult work. They're volunteers. And so, they deserve a lot of credit. Brian Burns, Carolyn Ferguson, Mr. Chris Frakis, Mike Sutphen, and of course, the Chair, Kathy White, deserve just, I think I got everyone. Tell me if I didn't, Kathy, but we really.
You did. You're right.
We really appreciate this. This is a lot of work. It's a lot of effort, and it's so important. It's, this is the kind of work that, these are the unsung heroes of this town, because this is critical work, and to have it done so well and so thoroughly is real credit to everybody and important for the town. So, thank you so much. Do we need, I'm going to ask Ms. Dennehy, do we need a motion on this? Do we need to accept the audit and the financial statements and the management letter? I'm not sure if we need to.
No, I think it's just an annual presentation that they make to the board.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all. Much appreciated. And we look forward to the follow-up. Thanks so much.
Thank you all.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Without objection, I'd like to move to item 11, which is a discussion of the two-hour parking pilot, because we've had Mr. Delaney of the East Milton Line and Spirits on the line for quite a while. And I'm going to ask Hillary to unmute Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney, I do apologize for making you wait so long.
No problem. I appreciate the attention the board's given us.
Not at all. So, we've received your letter about the parking issues. And if you just want to, if you don't mind just kind of laying it out, and then we can have a discussion of it?
Yeah, the parking used to be a half an hour out in front of the store. And, you know, it's always tight in the square for parking. But when, you know, before we had this pandemic here, it was impacting the business in that those spaces out front were usually the last to go, because they were half an hour parking. And then, so it had some parking. But now, they're, in fact, the first ones to be taken. And so, there's never any parking outside, and it's caused some problems for my customers in that they will double park and get tickets there, and then they'll, you know, it's just frustrating for them to try and support local business and not ever have any spaces. So, I was asking that we return four spaces back, and actually, to 15-minute parking, four spaces in front of the, on Granite Ave, adjacent to the store. And I think it'd have minimal impact on the rest of the businesses there, and would be very helpful for my customers and our business.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. That's very helpful. Comments or questions from the members? Just to frame it, Mr. Delaney, this arose, the change arose really from a request from the Chamber of Commerce. And in January, I guess it was December before the holidays, in response to the Chamber's request, the board put in place a pilot program just for East Milton for the two-hour parking, and to be reconsidered in June. And that's what we're, and certainly, this feedback is helpful. So, with that framing, I just want to ask, you know, any other comments or questions from the members?
Mr. Chair? This is Richard.
Go ahead, Richard.
So, just a point of historical context on this, and especially in the way the procedures take place for votes we take with regard to changes. This initially came as a vote of the Traffic Commission, to us, brought to us by the Traffic Commission Chair, Mr. Berkeley, back in several months ago. And it was actually, I think, my own intervention that I wanted to hear some comments from the Chamber and the square. But I think Mr. Delaney's avenue of revenue would be to take this back to the Traffic Commission, make his presentation to them, and then I think if they agree with it, that they would then, at the end of our pilot program in June, make any additional changes or recommendations at that time. I just think that's procedurally the way to proceed on this.
Katie?
So, I agree that the Traffic Commission should take another look at this. I thought there should have been spaces that were not two-hour parking. That's why I voted against the two-hour parking in the square, make uniformly. But I, you know, I'm concerned still about the Milton House of Pizza side of Adams Street, which we did have a proposal at one point from the town planner, who thought that some of the spaces on Adams Street should also be shorter than two hours. So, I think the Traffic Commission needs to take another holistic approach. It was just a pilot program. And Delaney is raising it with respect to Granite Avenue. But one of the questions we had last fall was whether the Chamber was representing all of the business owners and whether there are others out there that are also impacted by the change to two hours. So, we had, since we decided it would be a six-month pilot program, I think we could refer it back to the Traffic Commission and ask them to take, I think we should give the Mr. Delaney's letter, ask them to start working on it June or December before we know it, and see whether they're, how this is working on other streets in the business district as well.
Ms. Collins?
I think it would be important to speak to other business owners and also to find out what the status is. There were more traffic studies being done. I believe the planning board was working on something, because Cheryl DeGaius had come in and talked about that. So, it would be a good idea, I think, for us to understand where they are, also to speak to other business owners. And I have a question for Mr. Delaney. In your letter, you said that this was impacting your business in another way that you felt some of your customers, some of your trade had gone elsewhere. And I just wondered what another few months of that would be like. Of course, that's, I guess, a difficult question to answer, given what's happening right now.
Yeah, downturn was significant. And it's normally a slow time of the year first anyways, at the beginning of the year. But, you know, with the current situation, it's different now. It's, you know, there's plenty of parking. And, you know, it's just a horrible situation as far as, you know, what we're all going through. And I want to make sure everybody understands I understand that. And, but when situation returns to normal, my business will have some difficulty.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the members? So, let me suggest this, along the lines of what Katie suggested, referring this issue to the Traffic Commission and having Mr. Delaney and also the Chamber to represent the interests of the other business owners to contact. Chamber, Richard's right, I think the Chamber went to the Traffic Commission, and the Traffic Commission sent it to us. And so, maybe if we have the Chamber and Mr. Delaney. sent it to us. And so maybe if we have the Chamber and Mr. Delaney and the Traffic Commission review this in the short term, again, then that will bring in the other, as Melinda said, the other business owners. Does that make sense as an approach here?
Mr. Chair, this is Richard again. I believe procedurally that's the way we should go with this. And I do know, I follow this very closely. I'm in that square every single day. I don't agree 100% with the way he's projecting it, but I do think he might have somewhat of a point. But I do know that the Traffic Commission, particularly Lieutenant Alba from the Police Department, who handles the enforcement aspect of it daily, is monitoring this very closely. And I do believe there will be a couple of minor tweaks. As to Mrs. Collins' comments about another plan, I don't want to get into all that because this is a living, breathing thing that I think they're heading in the right direction. But back to Katie's point, a few minor tweaks, which this may be one of them. I believe the Traffic Commission will be more than able to address this and come back to us with any adjustments to this program moving forward.
Yeah. So if that makes sense to the members, then I'll ask Mr. Delaney, we'll forward your letter to the Traffic Commission. We will, and Mike Dennehy, I'll ask you to hopefully make this connection. We'll connect you with the Traffic Commission so you'll know when their next meeting is. And also we'll wrap in the Chamber as well. So the Chamber, so all of the parties can be heard at the Traffic Commission and we'll refer it for their next meeting. I don't know, as I sit here, when their next meeting is. Does that, at least, get you in the right road, Mr. Delaney, in terms of getting some kind of resolution?
Yes, I appreciate, you know, everything you've done and discussed. And yeah, that sounds good.
All right. So we'll connect you with the Traffic Commission along with the Chamber. And then, you know, to Richard's point, we'll get the Traffic Commission to take a look at this in the short term at their next meeting and see what comes from that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Delaney. All right. Moving back to item eight, which is a discussion of a 40B status letter. And I think this was a letter that came about from, came from the Planning Department as a way to kind of describe what was going on with 40B and to put on a website. Is that fair, Ms. Collins?
Yes. Our assistant planner, Allison Quinn, put this together for us. I think she's been going out into the community and speaking with people and she saw that there was a need for some more clarity. And Judy Barrett's presentation this evening was very good. But as we know, different people access information in different ways. And so this is another attempt to help people understand the process and what we are doing. For instance, one of the residents who spoke this evening talked about the need to be, for the town to be proactive. And that's, I think, where we've been trying to head. This board has been trying to move in the direction of being proactive with the housing production plan and we'd like to produce that. So just outlining all those steps and what we're doing, in particular with these projects that have come, seems like an important step in talking about how we are being proactive.
Other comments or questions from the members?
I have a question. This is Katie. Should we reference the Ice House in this memo? Since it's still fairly recent and I think it's still pending.
It is still pending and it may even be referenced in these other letters because we are still working with the development company on the Ice House. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
To that point, what about, we could also reference, and we don't want to overly, we don't want to make this more than it is, but we could also reference the Randolph Ave, status of Randolph Ave, the fact that that's in litigation, just to give people a full picture. I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure if that fits within this, but I just throw it out there simply going to be referencing the Ice House.
I think that would really complicate things because it's, it's from a former era and it's a very specific process.
A fair point.
Yeah. It's a very complex situation. And I think to your point about simplicity, maybe if we could group like things.
Yeah. And I think where this also references these project eligibility letters, it's really geared more towards the current, the new filings.
Yep. I think it's a good point. I have a couple, just a couple of specifics in that, just in the first paragraph where we talk about working with Planning Department, Planning Board, and Affordable Housing Trustees, and additional town boards, I would rather just say that we're working closely with all the town boards, committees, and departments without calling out some and saying, well, we're working with these and some additional ones. I'd rather just say we're working closely with the town boards, committees, and departments on this. Just so we, you know, make sure we credit all the boards and committees and departments. And then the other thing, the only other thing that I had is in the second to last paragraph, there was a discussion about drafting a town-wide inclusionary development policy. I would hesitate to talk about drafting, drafting policies that haven't been, or potential policies that haven't been discussed or approved by any boards. And so if those have not yet been discussed or approved by any boards, that I would hesitate to include that paragraph as well. So those are my just two specific comments.
Mr. Chair, this is Richard.
Yes, Richard, go ahead, please. Sorry.
So a couple of things. A, I can't see this letter, so I don't know where it is, but I've been trying to open. I can't find it. So I'm not sure exactly what it says. But with regard to your comments, makes sense to me. The first comment is absolutely inclusionary of everyone and you don't want to leave anyone else. So I agree with that. And then the second one, I think I agree with that as well about Randolph Ave. Even though I'm commenting based on what I'm listening to all of you say because I can't see it.
Well, as far as the inclusionary zoning, it's in our housing production plan, which we accepted and has been approved by DHCD. So I'm not sure, and that's part of being proactive. I mean, we could take it out, but it is something that we said we wanted to draft. And until it's drafted, it can't be voted on by town meeting. And by that point, it's moot to put it in something like that. I mean, we can talk about, well, we have this. That's great. But if, is the feeling that it would confuse people because they would think it's absolutely forthcoming?
No, I, yeah, I think it's premature to talk about, well, we're drafting a policy. To me, it's just premature to, because you don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah. So would it, would it be, well, it sounds like it just needs a little work. And it's not that we shouldn't talk about inclusionary zoning, which has been included actually in the Milton Village overlay zoning. So we have some drafted for that area. Maybe it's better to talk about some of the features of the housing production plan. I don't know.
Or maybe, and again, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to try to overanalyze this. But maybe we just say that, you know, our housing production plan includes an inclusionary drafting, inclusionary development policy, and it is our intention to move forward with that, something like that.
Right, right. Yeah. That's where, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah, exactly.
And I like that because I think it's clearer. So clarity. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this? So we can move forward with this and with those tweaks, put it up on the website.
Okay. I would like to make sure that they're reviewed before they go up. And I'm just wondering how people would like to handle that. Is it okay if Mike approves that we can put it up after it's tweaked by Allison or?
I'm fine with that. This is Richard. I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I'd rather not, I don't think, these are kind of ministerial changes. We've kind of agreed on the big points. So this is ministerial. So if we just circulate the ministerial changes to the members and then put it up, I think that'll probably be.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Item, thank you, Melinda, for moving forward with that. Item 10, the Town Council Contract. And Mr. Dennehy, do you want to take this?
Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So I've been with the town nearly four years. When I joined the town, that Warrant Committee, my first year, which was fiscal year 17, several members of the Warrant Committee had taken issue with the fact that both the Auditing Services contract and Legal Services contract with the town, which are exempt under Chapter 30B, weren't put out for solicitation, if you will. When we hired our Chief Procurement Officer in 2017, she had some concern about this. Subsequently, we put the contract out for Auditing Services. And we're currently in the second year of a contract. Auditing Services were in a similar situation where they hadn't been put out in several years. So it's normally this time of year that we receive a proposal from Town Council. And I will qualify this by saying we could not have a better team on board than Kevin Freitag, his predecessor, John Flynn, and the team, an army of lawyers who have been constantly helping us through the last couple of days here with legislation being filed and remote participation and things like that. But it has come up and the new Chief Procurement Officer in due diligence is working through, getting his feet under his ground and also brought this to my attention. So I'll bring it to the board. It is a contract under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. It is exempt from Chapter 30B. But just to put it on the table, I know we talked about it last year. We went in transition when John Flynn transitioned out of Town Council for, you know, what he had held for almost 30 years. And we thank him for that. So here we are a year later on the eve of a proposal probably coming from our current and wonderful legal team at Murphy Hesse-Tumalane.
Comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
This is Katie. Well, yeah, I guess I have different thoughts on this. And I could see the argument on both sides of this. Previously, I was a little more inclined towards wanting to put this out for bid. But the town administrator is right that this has come up at the Warrant Committee for a number of years as a question. And we've typically responded to them saying that, at the time, John was, had been serving for close to 30 years. And we thought that at some point when the former Town Council, John Flynn, retired, that maybe that would be the appropriate time to do it. The board did not decide to do that last year, I think for good reason. John is still involved and he's still working with the Warrant Committee. And he does bring a lot of institutional knowledge. And we've, you know, when the board has gotten this question from the Warrant Committee in the past, we've tried to distinguish it from the Audit Services where, you know, the auditors are there to be an outside set of eyes on our books and records and to do an independent review. That's a little different than Town Council who is advising us, defending us, representing us in litigation. So I'm not as concerned as at one time in thinking that we probably need to go out to bid on this. I think Kevin Freitag has done a great job. You have other attorneys at Murphy Hesse. There's a lot of background on this. I don't know if anyone can hear, but there's a lot of background noise here on the call.
I think, could the members who aren't talking just mute if they can, then maybe it'll work a little better.
You know, there are other attorneys at Murphy Hesse who bring a lot of institutional knowledge about the town's practices, history, litigation, past decisions. And they include people like Indigo, David DeLuca, Caris North. So I think although this question has come up, there's a lot of positives and a lot of value in having, a Town Council has a lot of institutional memory. So I think there are arguments on both sides of this. I think it was a stronger case to go out to bid for the Audit Service. And we actually ended up with the same audit firm. We just, we changed the audit partner who took the lead. And so Mr. Peacock has been with us for a couple of years. But before that, we had another member of Powers and Sullivan who was our lead auditor for quite a long time. So I'm interested in hearing what other people's thoughts are. I'm not as inclined to think that it's as important to go out to bid on this as I may have been previously.
Other comments or questions from the members? Ms. Collins?
Well, I believe that we said we wanted to see how things went over the course of the year after John transitioned. And while I can appreciate the Warrant Committee bringing to our attention that we might want to poke our head up and look around at other candidates, I think we've had a good experience this year. And perhaps we might want to talk about what has gone well and places where we could strengthen our relationship. Because I don't think there's any professional relationship where that couldn't happen on both sides. Because clients also have a responsibility to be part of the team. So I think that I'd be very interested in, and I'm not sure about going out to bid. I really, I'd have to think about that some more.
Other comments or questions from the members? Richard?
Yeah, this is Richard. So I'm just thinking, is there a way that, my first question is to Katie, who, I mean, Katie, you're, I mean, I understand all the things you've said. I mean, I get all the institutional. Is there much, by way like in the Mass Selectment Association, do you see at all, it's a topic being brought up where communities look or test the waters regarding going out to bid, either, I would never expect, you know, say annually or periodically for legal services? Do you see that at all?
It's never come up as a discussion in any of the meetings I've been at, Richard.
My second point would be, is this something that we could perhaps discuss, plan an executive session to discuss a strategy for if we were to do this? Because obviously, I think part of the strategy, if we were going to do this, is something we want to discuss amongst ourselves. Just the nature of the types of cases they cover for us. So I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm sure there may be a way to do it, but I'm not sure how we do it.
Yeah, we can look into that, Richard. We'd probably have to get Town Council's advice about whether.
That's okay though. I mean, I look at, I'm fine with that. But I think that I'm more inclined with Katie. I don't, I don't know. I do know that in the, in the interviews that Mr. Dennehy and I did during the procedure to bring on Joanna, some of the law firms we interviewed talked about the fact that they were surprised that we don't test this, you know, we don't go out periodically to look at other possibilities of Town Council. A couple of former members have said it to me. So I don't, I don't know, but I know there aren't that many agencies and that many firms out there that do this. And as Katie said, even if we were to do it, perhaps we would just go right back to where we're standing now. So I don't know. It is a difficult decision. But it is one that... Um, but um, it is one that I've, and I've only been here three years, has been brought up to me, but, but when I got here and even as recently as this year. So um, I don't know. I'm not sure, but I think perhaps probably prudent of us to somehow discuss this more in depth as to the, the pros and the cons, as to why we may or should not want to do this.
Um, um, Ms. Collins?
Yes, I, I, and um, to Richard's point, there, there can be a lot of strength to discovering that you're in the right place. So um, we, we, I, I do think that it's worthy of, of continued discussion. Um.
Good. Other comments or questions?
I just want to go back, because I want to go back there, because almost things like, you know, what the town administrator is calling, you know, like goals and objectives. And I, I just, I just, I mean, John brought a great deal, as Katie says, of institutional value and as is the firm itself, but I just look at the things that were being challenged with today versus when Murphy Hesse first came on the board from replacing a in-house Bob O'Leary, which was, I was a rookie cop. It was like nineteen eighty-seven where it happened. It was shortly after the Hall versus the Todd and Milton case. Um, and that was when the town made the step towards a, a firm that had a diverse background. But things have changed. I mean, look at the, look at the battles we're fighting today. I mean, there affordable housing, airplane noise, I mean, employee issues, contracts, all this, I just, my first comment about us being able to discuss this is, is like, like I say, what are the goals and objectives? What, what do we want from our town council moving forward? And what are going to be the needs for? Not just the, the five of us who sit here now, but boards going forward. So that, I don't know if I'm saying that correctly, but I think you probably get what I'm, I'm trying to allude to here.
Yeah, I think, I think it makes good sense. Um, uh, why don't we do this if it, it makes sense? We'll um, ask Mr. Dennehy to follow up with the new chief procurement officer, uh, to get his thoughts on this. Uh, and that, uh, the agenda for our next meeting, um, depending on, on, on whether it meets the executive session standard.
Mr. Chair, could I just add a couple of words?
Yeah, please, please, Tony.
Um, I'd just like to go on record as saying that I'm, I'm strongly in favor um, of, of putting this uh, up for, for bid and for review. Uh, I think that we'd be doing the town and Milton a disservice if we didn't. Um, each of us uh, on the board, some members more than others, uh, have longstanding relationships with John Flynn and, and Arthur Murphy and even Kate, Kevin Freitag. Uh, they're made of pretty stern stuff over there at Murphy Hesse. Uh, they're professionals. And I don't think that we are risking offending anyone's delicate sensibilities by putting it up for review. It's very possible that we do, and we come to discover, hey, you know what? Murphy Hesse, Murphy, Murphy Hesse is still the best choice. But, but I don't think uh, it, it's offensive to anyone to uh, to do a little shopping. I really don't. And, and uh, I think it's worth exploring, particularly if what I heard earlier is correct, that this hasn't been reviewed or put out in, in, is it thirty years? Is it, do I have that right?
More. I think, I think it's more than thirty. I think it's, it's probably closer to forty.
I gotta be honest with you. If this thing hasn't been reviewed, our legal contract in over thirty years, we're doing the town of Milton a disservice if we don't.
Well, well, just to, just to clarify, I think the legal contract has been changed. It's just the, whether it's gone out to bid.
Right. I under, yeah, that's what I meant. Correct. Thank you for that distinction.
Yeah, Tony, on that point, there's an engagement letter that's signed every year, and you know, we've sometimes negotiated with um, in terms of the increase, the hourly increases.
Of course. No, I remember signing that. So, so, but in, in terms of the, uh, the firm that's performing the work, um, if we haven't interviewed other firms to do that work, I think now is the time to do it.
Yeah, the interesting thing was that um, the town had appointed John Flynn personally as the town council, whereas now it's, it's the firm that's appointed as town council. So that's been a change. Um, so that, I just a little bit more history on it.
Was Katie, wasn't it Arthur Mur, uh-oh. Katie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Wasn't it Arthur Murphy who was initially town council?
Is he labor and employment law? Because I, I think as John's colleague, I think that's, I think as labor and employment council, but John was town council.
Yeah, I, I just, my memory of when they first arrived, you know, the, the first lawyer that I ever heard, but hearing, or hearing from, or representing the town was in fact Arthur himself. It was a, I thought it was a couple of years before John actually became town, but I could be, but I, I just, my memory is Arthur before John.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but that may be the case.
All right. So it, it sounds like the, 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 the will of the board is to uh, include this on uh, as an agenda in one of our next uh, next uh, uh, meeting and uh, get a little information and have some more discussion about it. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
I'm fine with that. Yes.
All right, uh, item twelve, which is a discussion of the delay of the annual town election. And um, due to the, the very uh, uh, quick and up-to-date work of our town council, uh, Kevin Freitag.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself on this right now. Okay, is that all right with you? This is Richard?
Yeah, sorry about that, Richard. Yes.
Okay. Hillary, you can text me. I'm just going.
Yeah.
You can text me when uh, when we're back in. Thanks.
Probably, probably less than five minutes, Richard, I would think.
No worries. Thanks.
Um, okay, uh, so uh, this is the delay of the annual town election. As I said, do the very good work of our town council. Uh, we have a motion that is, I think, maybe one or two days after uh, the governor's order, which allows um, which allows uh, uh, towns to uh, select other towns such as ours to postpone and schedule the town election. Our town elections turn, currently scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. We were going to uh, petition the governor, as is the normal route, to change the date, but based on this uh, emergency um, uh, order um, and legislation, uh, we are able to do it without that. Uh, and so uh, we have previously rescheduled our town meeting to um, June, I believe it's fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
That's correct.
And, and so uh, the proposal is to reschedule our town election the Tuesday before that, which is typical, which would be, which is typical, which would be June ninth. Um, comments or questions from the members?
Um, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
Uh, pursuant to section one of chapter forty-five of the Acts of twenty twenty, and because of the state of emergency declared by the governor pursuant to executive order five nine one, declaration of a state of emergency to respond to COVID nineteen. Milton's town election scheduled for Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, is hereby postponed to Tuesday, June ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in, uh, this is the roll call vote. All is in favor of Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Zul is yes. Uh, the vote is four zero. Uh, and so now our town election will be on Tuesday, June ninth, two thousand and twenty. And, and I should have added that uh, our town clerk, Sue Galvin, has weighed in on this, and, and she's aware of that proposal and in support of it. Um, all right, uh, Hillary, could you uh, uh, try to uh, get word to Richard so he can come back in to the meeting?
Yes, I have reached out, so he should be back momentarily.
Be going on to item fourteen, I'm sorry, item thirteen, which is discussion approval of the annual election and town meeting warrant revised schedule. Um, as soon as Richard is back in, uh, Richard, are you, let me know when you're back in, if you're, if you're actually on mute, but uh, let's. Hillary, if we could make sure that Richard's on, oh, there he goes. Richard, are you back?
Okay.
You back? Richard? I think he's back. Um, all right, so.
I'm back, I'm back.
Great.
I'm back. Thank you.
Great. Item, item thirteen, discussion approval of the annual town ele- election meeting warrant revised schedule. Mr. Dennehy, do you want to, do you want to take us through this?
Sure. Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, based on that vote that you just took and the vote uh, last week, uh, or, yeah, it was last week, or was it Monday night with Bob His? Um, to move the dates of town meeting, um, I would ask uh, that the warrants go to the printer on April twenty-fourth, uh, which would give us ample time to get everything moving uh, smoothly. Uh, would give the warrant committee time to meet and make their final recommendations. Uh, it would get us time to uh, also uh, revisit the warrant as the, after it comes back from the printer for any edits or changes we need to make and get it in his hands so that he can get it um, to the residences uh, and uh, post office, et cetera, in a timely fashion.
Comments or questions from the members on the revised schedule? So hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised schedule.
This is Richard. I'll make a motion to approve the revised schedule.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second. It all, uh, this is going to be a roll call vote. Any further discussion? This be, this be a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Collins? Yes, I saw you say yes. I can't hear you, but I.
Sorry, yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item fourteen is going to be deferred, is my understanding, uh, until uh, our next meeting. Uh, item fifteen is the reappointment of our tree warden. Do we have a motion on that?
I'll move that we, this is Katie. I'll move that we reappoint Branch Lane of eighty-five Highland Street as tree warden with the term to expire on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and this is going to be a roll call vote. Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, unanimous vote. Item sixteen, meeting minutes. We have um, meeting minutes, as have been uh, revised with some amendments. I, I think we have circulated all the revisions. Um, uh, Hillary, we, we, all, all those revisions have been circulated, both Katie's and mine, and, and any additional ones? Is that right? Hillary?
The revisions have not been circulated, but they have been made.
They've been made. Okay. Uh, well, they were in the, they were in the SharePoint.
They are in the OneDrive, yes.
The OneDrive, okay. So there were some revisions. Uh, I wouldn't say, uh, they were substantive, but they were in the, 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 the the last versions that are in the OneDrive. Uh, these are the meeting minutes from March thirteen, sixteen, nineteen, and twenty. Uh, so are we prepared to move forward on those?
Um.
Ms. Collins?
I, I am. I, I read them all. Uh, so I, I'm ready to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March thirteenth. Nineteenth and twenty, the twenty, as written.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Going to be a roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
All right, let me just do that. Item seventeen. All of our date of April seventh, which was uh, Passover will be April eighth, and uh, we've advertised a discussion for the East Milton forty B on that day, and we have April twenty-second. Seems to me that we, we, he um, uh, set another date within the situation. We want to set.
It, it, may I say something? Tony, could you please mute yourself while you're not because we're having a lot of trouble hearing as you're moving around? Thank you.
Um, all right. I'm sorry. Um.
This is Five Star Television.
It's an action show. I'm sorry, it's getting late. Oh, there he is. He's here. Excellent. All right. So uh, um.
Remember, keep your distance.
All right, yes, we're, 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 we're one conference table, full conference table apart. Um, so uh, the question is, do we want to set a, a date uh, before April seventh? A date perhaps the end of this week or next week, uh, to the extent that anything comes up with the COVID nineteen situation? And also to get. Mr. Wells?
This is Richard. Do you want to just play it by ear? I mean, we're still working under the emergency um, the emergency order here that you can post almost at any time. I think that maybe that might make it easier for you, because we are truly playing on a day-to-day basis. I mean, just um, our cases went up by a hundred percent today, so it's, it's just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm one voice, but I'm, I'm playing it your whim. What, I view with it in this situation, you need us with it. And the fact that we're able to do this this way, I think it makes it uh, a lot easier for all of us, especially you trying to get us all together.
Any other thoughts?
Is this regarding the tw- the seventh and the twenty-second? I, I might have missed.
No, I'm sorry, Katie, regarding uh, setting, setting an intermediate date uh, between, before review uh, the COVID nineteen situation, perhaps next week, or just playing it by ear and uh, setting a date as needed.
Yeah, I could go either way. I don't disagree with Richard that we, we've got a lot of flexibility here, so.
Okay. Um, I, I, I think that's fine as well. I, you know, everyone's been great about uh, being able to be available. Uh, so we can, um, we, you know, as things come up. My, my guess is uh, we're going to want to do a meeting, um, if not at the end of this week, um, uh, beginning of next week at the very least, to have Caroline come in and give us an update. Um.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I, I think at some point we need to hear from.
Turn it down.
And um, and it, it would be good to have uh, an update uh, about our town and also what, what's going on at the hospital.
Right. So, uh, so it may, so it's Wednesday now. Uh, we may try to do something. We can't get posted for Friday. So maybe, you know, as I sit here, unless some, unless an emergen- emergency comes up, uh, maybe we will, we'll uh, set something with Caroline for Monday to give us an update. Uh, unless we have some emergency that comes up between now and then. Uh, Ms. Ms. Collins?
Um, thi- this may not be the appropriate time to mention this, but I, I had just received an email um, a little while ago today from a resident wondering about um, a, a place for residents to find out about volunteer opportunities or needs in the community and, and um, what resources we have. And basically, we have uh, the, the town website. And, but I, I just wanted to, to note that, um, that somebody is, is looking for um, I guess sort of a, a, a place to send people for those, those opportunities and requests. I'm not sure what we could do to help about that, but um, we might want to think about that in the meantime.
I, 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 this is Ri- Michael, this is Richard. Are, are my mute?
Yeah, no, no, go ahead, Richard. Oh, you, you weren't. There you go. Go ahead, please.
So I, I know just in conversations I've had with Lieutenant Caputo, if you know, we have a pretty good cadre of volunteers that just in our preserves that are, they're being very careful about using, but the only thing I can really see changing um, is I, I, and I think you know this, Mr. Chair, it's very possible that we may be standing up a um, a testing site here in Milton, um, some, in the unforeseen, in the next week or so. It's very possible it's going to happen. Um, but I don't think there'd be any volunteers really, other than I just don't see that at this point, but I think that, that our professional staff are doing the best they can to protect our um, our volunteer staff, our volunteers. And uh, that's just my thought. And I, I, I thought that too, if someone were to call and say, I want to help, this is a unique situation, other than like nurses, as we know, Caroline needs, you know, help with nurses like that.
Yeah, I, I think this person is looking for um, a, a way to, for people who want to donate uh, either supplies or. or, um, funds or, or thi- things like that, or to help get information out, uh, um, that, I think that's more what this person. And I haven't followed up with the conversation, because it, I, I just received the email, um, before the meeting, but, uh.
So just to follow up to, oh, sorry.
No.
So just to follow up to Caroline's last briefing to us, any donations of supplies, masks, gloves, that they're, um, taking all that at, at, uh, Milton Police Headquarters, um, Lieutenant Caputo has a depository there to get it, and through Caroline and the public health staff, they're getting it out to where it needs to be. It's clearly probably not anywhere near what, what, um, what's going on, but, um, anything that you know of with people, I've had a couple, and I've referred them, um, take it to the Milton Police Station, drop it off, and it'll, and it'll get into the hands of Caroline and her staff, and who needs it?
So here's, here's a suggestion, um, uh, you know, maybe between now, and, and I think, I think we'll probably set a meeting for Monday, uh, that's the next available day. Uh, between now and then, uh, we'll see if, um, Caroline Cincella from our Public Health Department and Lieutenant Caputo from our local emergency planning committee, uh, we'll see if they would benefit from a coordinated approach. We could set up, we could, we could put together a committee, um, to coordinate volunteer activity, if it would be helpful. So maybe we, we reach out to them and see if it would be helpful for us to try to. Could be a, a committee of volunteers to, to coordinate volunteers.
Right, well, in the meantime, I, let, let me follow up with, um, uh, see if I can connect with this person by phone and, and see where the request is coming from and sort of the energy behind it and those things. Um, because the Lieutenant Caputo and, and Caroline Cincella are, uh, they're, they're, um, to say they're extremely busy is such an understatement, um, a- and, uh, I, I don't even, I don't even understand exactly what's being offered yet. So I'll do that in the meantime, so that we have something, um, concrete to say to them.
All right, um, uh, item eighteen, Town Administrator's Report, Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just unmuting myself here. Uh, just bear with me, it's a pretty lengthy report, and I don't know if we should hold questions till the end, but, um, I'll start with town offices. So after the governor's advisory came out on Monday regarding the closure of nonessential business in the Commonwealth, we took a second look at the non-public safety staggered staffing levels around town offices, and we trimmed them a bit. Uh, several departments, uh, have been working with our IT department for employees to work more remotely and further social distancing. Having said that, town offices are staffed and still open for business. Um, we've seen a large uptick in the number of residents doing their business online, and want to remind viewers that if they have any questions, they can email me at M. Dennehy, D-E-N-N-E-H-Y, at townofmilton.org, or call the office, uh, six-one-seven-eight-nine-eight-four-eight-four-five. Uh, to that point, uh, as we can understand, I think the number of cases that the governor released today, uh, another eighteen-hundred and, I believe the total is eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight confirmed in Massachusetts. So, as the number of cases, uh, confirmed cases rise in Milton, uh, our Health Director Caroline Cincella and her team, um, who've been doing a great job, their workload increases exponentially with these case. Um, funding sources are becoming available from the state level. Uh, in fact, today, the Department of Health and Mass, uh, Health Officers Association awarded the Milton Health Department with eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Um, Director Cincella had asked for twenty-five thousand dollars, but due to the overwhelming demand, they decided to allocate the entire four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars on a per-capita basis. Um, and it follows that it was point four-one-seven-five per person. So that's how they come to the eleven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-dollar amount. Um, this funding will allow, um, Caroline to increase and add staff. Um, she's going to add a part-time staffer and increase, uh, Public Health Nurse Sue Poirier's weekly hours, uh, which should help immensely. Um, going to the Building Commissioner, uh, on Monday, the governor's nonessential advisory, uh, specifically identified home construction as essential. Uh, the town's Building Commissioner, uh, has forwarded, sent me an email, which is, I forwarded to this board. Uh, he's in, uh, direct opposition to this qualification, and he's asking for the board to weigh in on this, um, possibly Monday. Eversource, uh, on Tuesday, Eversource, uh, their government liaison, uh, Ryan Earl, sent a letter, um, from their, uh, President Craig Hallstrom, reinforcing Eversource's commitment, um, to providing the best possible service to the Milton community during this pandemic, what their priorities are, uh, what some of their limitations are, based on, uh, the government's, uh, by, governor's advisory statement on Monday. Um, this letter can be found on the town's webpage, if people want to look that up and see what Eversource can and cannot do, um, for its, its rate pairs. Um, just a quick update on the library. Uh, unfortunately, the library was forced to discontinue its popular curbside reservation and pickup program last Friday. Instead, the library will only be offering online services until further notice. Um, these online services are accessible twenty-four-seven and require the use of your library card. Um, Director Will Adamcheck, uh, has asked me to ask folks to visit miltonlibrary.org for a list of online resources offered at the library. Um, the accounting department, as, uh, Member Conlon mentioned at our previous meeting, um, town accountant has been in contact with their counterparts at the Mass Municipal Accountants and Auditors Association. Um, the impact of COVID-nineteen, uh, is ongoing, and its financial impact on the economy is still yet to be determined. But at this time, several communities are considering putting a freeze on all nonessential budget spending, um, except payrolls, utilities, contractual items, uh, as well as COVID-nineteen expenses. Uh, the main reasons to consider doing this is that it is likely that the town's actual revenues will not meet the estimates used to balance the FY-twenty budget the current year we're in, and the town will have, have a revenue deficit at year-end. In fact, a couple of communities have already put this freeze into place. So I think that's something else, uh, we could talk about Monday night. Um, on a positive note, uh, spring has sprung, regardless of the snow we saw falling outside our windows Monday. Uh, in fact, um, I'll make the statement that yard bor- yard work, which is a good form of exercise, uh, could also be considered a plausible method for social distancing. Um, and the timing is great, as the first curbside yard waste collection week will begin next Monday, March thirtieth, and run through Friday, April third. Um, I would be remiss if I didn't thank our public safety officials. Um, operations folks have been out there twenty-four-seven. Obviously, we're in uncharted waters. Um, they continue, they continue to answer the bell on every call, and we ask them to be safe going forward. And lastly, I'd like to thank Milton Academy and Curry College. Um, Chief King reached out to me that, uh, they're a little bit low on janitorial supplies. I emailed both, uh, entities, institutions on Monday, and on Tuesday, each of them delivered, um, necessary janitorial supplies. So I want to acknowledge and, and thank them for their partnership in the town. And I know there was a lot, and you probably have some questions, uh, but I think two, two agenda items from Monday could be, um, uh, the, what, what the town accountant had, had highlighted with respect to FY-twenty expenditures, and with the Building Commissioner, um, his opposition to the governor's statement, um, about home construction and construction being essential.
So, so given that, are there any, are there any questions, uh, questions to Mr. Dennehy? Um, here, Ms., Ms. Collins, do you have?
Um, just, uh, for, uh, for, for Monday, uh, when we talk about the, the budget, just to know if, what the specific steps are, if we, if there are steps that are called for in order to, to do that, so we're prepared to act if we feel that it's the right time. I, I, I haven't seen anything. I've been trying to do some reading on that, and I, I haven't seen that there are specific steps, but, um, uh, um, Amy Dexter would, would know how to guide us on that, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, and she does have a lot more information. She's been gathering information. Um, she compiled that list of what we should be spending, um, our money on at this time, and we have asked all the department heads to start revisiting, uh, some of the savings that they, they, they may see, um, with buildings closed down and some services not being delivered through the re- the rest of the fiscal year. And, and I think we can all assume that revenues won't be where we, where we need them to be, so I think it's a prudent step. Um, and I can ask the town accountant to join us Monday, and we can go through some specifics.
Any, anything else? Um, I would just say on the, on the building construction, uh, issue raised by our Building Commissioner, we can, we can put this on the agenda for Monday. And well, I won't go into it, uh, because it's not on the agenda, but we'll, we'll discuss it at length. There is a, an order from the governor um, today, uh, that appears to, um, supersede anything that municipalities will do, but, uh, but we'll have our town accountant look into it, and we'll, I mean, I'm sorry, town, town council will look into it, and, uh, and we will, uh, we'll vet that on Monday. Um, item nineteen, the report of the chair, um, uh, just a, uh, a couple of things. First, an item that was not uh, on the agenda, but could not be reasonably anticipated, and it is a, a donation, a very generous donation from a resident. Um, um, Leroy Walker, uh, has, um, uh, offered to donate a thousand dollars to the Milton Police Department for the purp- for the purchase of personal protective equipment. Um, obviously, a very generous donation, very timely, um, uh, you know, and ev- evidence of a Milton resident stepping up. So, um, so even though this wasn't on the agenda, it came up, uh, just came up in the last, uh, day or so. Um, I would, uh, entertain a motion to take this, uh, item up, even though it wasn't on the agenda.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to, uh, this is Richard, to accept a thousand dollar, generous thou- thousand dollar donation from Mr. Walker to the Milton Police Department for the purposes of, uh, acquiring additional PPE M-ninety-five masks.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any further discussion?
We have two motions, Mike. Do we need the first one to take it?
It was unclear a minute whether we really need it, Katie, so I think, I think we're fine.
Okay.
Um, so this will be a roll call vote. Um, um, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
Um.
Yes, and thank you for, from Leroy Walker, for his generous donation.
And Mr. Wells?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Uh, a couple of things, uh, just, uh, you know, I, one thing that, um, our Public Health Department, uh, is, uh, doing incredible work, uh, but, uh, they have also benefited from people who've been willing to volunteer and other, uh, more evidence of people in this community stepping up in the, in the, in the, um, in, in a crisis. Um, our Public Health Department reached out to the school nurses and to others, and, um, the school nurses and, uh, and some other nurses in town have been willing, have been, have offered to, to volunteer, to help out our Public Health Department, uh, as they work their way through this crisis. So, uh, just a great example of, um, uh, Milton residents and people who work in the town stepping up to help. Um, and, uh, I just want to, and, and I think everyone's, has said it and feels it, but, but I just want to say, um, uh, the town has been through a lot, as all towns have, uh, particularly in the last two weeks, and town government, uh, has been under a lot of stress and strain, and people have really stood up and really stepped up and are doing an incredible job in an unprecedented circumstance. So all the town employees and the town departments and, um, and, uh, you know, our, our vendors, and, uh, we're, we're getting a lot of, uh, assistance and a lot of help, and, uh, particularly, and all, all coordinated by Mr. Dennehy. Uh, and, uh, so people are stepping up, uh, the town is stepping up. Uh, I know the town residents are stepping up and doing what they need to do. Um, and, uh, so it's a great thing to see, and, and, uh, I just wanted to, I wanted to point that out. So thank you all for what you've done, and all for what you're going to need to do. As Mr. Wells points out, uh, this is not the end of the story. We have a long way to go here, and we're going to need that effort going forward, so. So, uh, that's, uh, that's all I have. Um, um, Ms. Collins?
I have nothing to add.
Um, Ms., Mr. Farrington? Um, Ms. Conlon?
No report.
Mr. Wells?
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I, I want to echo what you said as well. This is, you know, uncharted waters we're in, and I think everyone in the room and anyone listening knows the way I feel about the people who work for this community. They're the, they're the ones who, when we go to bed at night, make it happen each and every day, and this is, this is not, this is definitely not one they would have ever foreseen, but definitely not, not in a unusual circumstance in the way they were spawning. But I do want to make a mention, I had a conversation today with Mr. Magnosa, the owner of Milton Marketplace, and I don't know if you're all aware, there was an incident that took place there that today that required Milton Police to respond. Um, he's put in, he's, it's in accordance with the public health guidelines, they've put in place a pretty good seer, uh, system for allowing people in and out. But I just want to say to the residents who are listening, you know, the marketplace is a jewel right now. It, it's, uh, unlike the majority of our businesses, which are almost out of business, um, it's a thriving place. But if, if, for those who are going there, if they can just live with the guidelines, maintain the social distancing, that the MM, Milton Marketplace staff are doing their best to restock every day and have the, the items that people need, and I, I wouldn't, as I said to Michael today, and I said to both Chief King and, and Mr. Dennehy, I wouldn't want to imagine what life would become for us if the marketplace had to shut down. So thank you to him and all his staff for what they're doing. I realize they're a business, but they're an essential part of this community, and, and thank you to everyone who, 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 uh, utilizes, uh, Milton Marketplace for bearing with them during these trying times. That's all I just wanted to say. Thank you for your time on that.
Thank you. Um, public comments? I think we're, uh, I think we're good on, uh, unless someone has something. Um, we'll, we'll plan, we'll post a meeting for Monday. Um, uh, does, does Monday at six work for people, uh, since we're all home? Uh, does Monday at six work for people?
I'm at your beck and call, two AM, three AM, five AM, six PM, whatever you want.
Katie, Melinda, does that work?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I couldn't read my calendar.
The meeting would be, Mike, are we talking about an hour a month?
I think so. I think it's going to be mainly, uh, it, 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 it will be COVID-nineteen. So it'll be the issues that, that Mike raised tonight, the, the building construction ban, the freeze on spending, and an update from Caroline. Caroline?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, just for Mr. Dennehy, relative to two projects.
Go ahead, Richard.
Um, Michael, where are we with both the Hendry's project and the Walcott Estates? Are they working or not working right now?
I, I took around, uh, took a good ride around town today. Uh, Walcott Estates, the Hendry's project, and Polte, they're all at full speed, full construction speed today.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Is there any chance we could do the meeting on Monday a little bit earlier than six?
What time, Katie? Five?
Five.
Five, is five, does five?
Thirty, five, five-thirty.
Whatever you want.
But, what, whatever, whatever works, I can do that.
Five? All right, we'll go for five. We'll go for five on Monday.
Perfect.
Tony? Yep, Tony, yep, okay.
Mr. Chair, Mike, Mike Dennehy, if I can add one more thing?
You okay from six feet away? Go ahead, Mike, sorry.
Um, so I'm constantly looking at the information that's provided, and I would recommend to the viewers that they take a look at, at mass.gov. Um, you did a very good job with your public service announcement the other night of calling out some of the younger people in the community. I think there's some misinformation going around that, um, the confirms are older people. Um, I am fifty-one years old. Of the eighteen-hundred-and-thirty-eight cases confirmed through four o'clock today, fifty-four percent of them are younger than me. That's a lot. It's not just the aging population. I think everybody, and, and you hit upon it, uh, Monday night in the PSA, is, is everyone has to stop congregating, and they have to respect the social distancing. It's not, it's not just those with, uh, susceptible immune system. It can hit anyone of any age group, and I think the statistics, just in Massachusetts, and again, they're, they're preliminary, but if you look at those numbers, the state is now breaking it down by age groups. Fifty-four percent of them, uh, are from zero to forty-nine.
54% of them are from zero to 49. Thank you.
Mr. Zulis?
Yeah, please.
I don't, I don't want to put this number out, but this morning, a report was shared with me as to where we would be in Norfolk County on August 1st. And I don't want to publicly state the number. I can only tell you what's staggering, beyond anything I could have thought. And that's on August 1st. And that's the date that Norfolk County is projected to peak. So Mr. Dennehy's correct, especially for the younger people. And I mentioned this in our joint meeting with Public Health the other night. The Generation Z, I know they're young and healthy and vibrant. There's a great case tonight about a young individual college kid. He's on a respirator. His parents have no idea how he got it, and boom. This is clearly a virus of unknown proportions. I mean, one of the things that we're very lucky in this community, and there were three of the leading infectious people from Mass General and State living down, doctors. And one of them said, his neighborhood went out, gathered some stuff for him on Saturday, was after the game in the Mass, he said, I need another 30,000. So, and that's one of the leading infectious disease doctors from Mass General. So that kind of gives you, I think we all know, I don't think I've ever seen Caroline look as tense as she does. And just the final point, Mr. Chair, you're, the thing that the three or four of you did, Lieutenant Caputo, Caroline, Mr. Denny, and I think it's time to update it. Your numbers have increased unbelievably since, just since, when did you do that on Monday? That PSA that you did for cable TV?
No, I think.
It was Monday, and it was, it was four confirmed Monday.
Three. Well, actually, three. We're waiting on the fourth, and we're three times that now already. I'm not trying to make more work for you, by the way.
Oh, no, absolutely. No, no, I, you know, that's, no, absolutely, absolutely. We just, yeah, no, absolutely. Okay, community happenings, I think, unless I hear something different. Do you have any?
Twenty twenty-one.
Right, right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Roll call vote, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington? Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes, thank you all for your time and patience.
You're breaking up a little bit. It's very hard for us to hear you.
That should be better now. I'll call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor's Stoughton Trust Fund. The purpose is to discuss any issues with respect to COVID-19 involving the Milton Food Pantry and the Milton Residents Funds Fund. We sent $10,000, I think, last week to the Milton Food Pantry to help out. And the question is, is there something more that we, should we, that we can and want to do following on that? So questions or comments from the trustee?
Did everyone get, see in the OneDrive a copy of the email? Okay.
I did not. So Melinda, I didn't. So I'll vote, whatever you want to vote. I just tell me what the need is, or if there is one.
Right now, I think there isn't, what I got out of this, and correct me, everyone, if you see something different, is, is that there's, there's still funds there, but Noreen Dolan does anticipate that as this continues and then hopefully abates, that she'll start to hear of more need and have more requests. And she'll know better than what kind of aid might be required of people. But she said that she'll document the needs from lost wages and work hours and kind of rental assistance and things might be needed. I guess my one question is, well, there are 14 children who would like to sign up for summer camp. Who even knows if they'll have it? And she has the funds for that. But that brought to mind for me assistance with childcare. And I don't know what, what we can do to help, but at some point, people will be released to go back to work, and yet, school is not in session. And there may not be summer camps, because that, that may be seen as being too difficult to achieve social distancing, whereas when a lot of adults go back to work, they'll be able to put measures in place. So that's something I think we should think about. I don't know how we could help, if we could help. Maybe we could encourage the state to work on that. I don't know.
This is, I mean, my thinking also is that, you know, a lot of small businesses are starting to furlough employees and make people off, and there may be greater demands made of the residents fund than there are in a normal year. So I'm open to considering an additional donation to the residents fund from the Governor's Stoughton Fund. I think we were going to try to get a statement of the investment income from, to the government of Stoughton Fund over the last year or so. So if we could, maybe we could take this up on Monday if we wanted to vote something. It doesn't sound like she has an immediate need, but I think she could have a growing need. And I'd also be curious as to whether the food pantry, which she mentions in her email, mentions that they were happy to receive the additional support. But I'm wondering if they have a projected estimate of how quickly they may go through that, whether they have additional needs, so.
Well, they had gotten a bequest prior to this as well. And they used part of that to put shelving in so that they could stockpile more food. But I think they had some funds left over, and they do receive support from the Greater Boston Food Bank. But I'll, I can ask her if, if she would check in with them and see if they could make a projection. Maybe after this next week, they'll, they'll see better what's happening, if they could make a projection. And, and she said that she, she would do that. Right now, she still has about $33,000 remaining in the Milton Residents Fund just from Governor Stoughton trustees. So she also has additional funds from Martin and Swift.
It sounds as though it's not as urgent, but I think it could be a growing demand on her, so. And I'd like to get to a statement from the Treasurer's Office of the funds held in the Governor's Stoughton Fund, including investment income.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Yeah, please, Mr.
I, member Conlon, I had a brief conversation with the town treasurer on Monday with respect to that. So when we received the funds from Polte, it added approximately an additional $5.3 million, I believe it was February of 2019. I believe in fiscal 19, or it might be calendar year, but it's $116,000 of interest has been earned on that account.
Okay.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
About 2%, excuse me.
The question is, what does it look like now? I mean, I know they're relatively safe assets that, that, but I, I still don't know what that, that means. Just thinking of.
You mean the?
The stock market? You know, they're all down, so I think, but you said that was Monday. So are you saying it's 5,116,000 or so?
No, so he, I asked him for a previous interest, interest earned, and it was $116,000 for the year. I believe it was calendar year.
Yeah, I think it's on 5.6 to 5.7.
Yeah, it's about, it earned about 2%. I think it's in, I think it's low risk. Is that invested?
Yeah, it's definitely in a very low-risk investment. It's not in anything where you're going to wake up tomorrow and there's only 2.5 million left. That's not the case, but.
I realized that. I just didn't know if the position had changed.
I'd be inclined, I kind of want to go along with Katie. Do you think, Katie, would you agree, even if Monday we take a vote just to identify $10,000, is that enough? And if she needs it, she can come for it, and that way we won't have to vote on it. She could just make the request, and it's there? Would that be enough?
I mean, I'd be happy to approve 10,000 for it. I think she's ultimately, over the longer term, going to need more than that, but.
All right, you want to do 20,000? You pick a number. I'll go with whatever number you want.
I mean, she has 33 left from what we agreed last year. So I don't think she has an immediate need, but, but I'd be willing to do something short-term to do help. Because I do think she's going to get claims from people who are going to be rental assistants and other utility assistants because of a layoff or furlough.
I agree. So Mr. Chair, I'd go along with, I'll let Katie pick the number. I'll go along with, I mean, at least, and let's put a number on for Monday night that we can at least approve. And if she needs to go to it, she can go to it. That way, she doesn't even have to come back to us. It's kind of sitting there if she needs it.
Well, Richard, I think Melinda said she's going to reach out to Noreen, if I heard. Is that correct, Melinda?
I'm happy to do that if that's what the board thinks is needed.
I'm fine with that.
Noreen, in her email, said that she, she would document as she saw needs coming in so that she could give us an idea. But I'm, I'm happy to go back to her now and offer, offer this.
I think if Melinda's willing to talk with her, we should take Melinda up on that offer because.
I agree. I agree. Do you think maybe?
It would be interesting to see, Noreen has seen anything even in the last couple of weeks. Is she getting more phone calls? Are there different types of claims that people are calling her about? You know, like the childcare issue?
Right.
So it would be interesting to see what she could tell us.
Mr. Chair, could I make a suggestion that we possibly have Noreen on the call Monday night?
That would be great.
And have her directly?
Yeah.
And, 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 so, and I was going to say, I think the main thing is communication here. And maybe Melinda, you can bridge the gap and just make sure, you know, we can get some feedback from Noreen. We'll have her on the call Monday. So she can, basically, that she would be comfortable with in the short term. And then it's, I think it's also, communication is important with the food pantry. So if we can communicate with them between now and Monday, and then thereafter. Just I think the most important thing is, you know, when they have needs and when they see the needs arise, that we have that communicated to us as soon as it arises, so we can act on it.
Right. Well, Noreen is on the board of the food pantry, as is Pastor Shelley. And she, I actually had reached out to her about the volunteers that they had asked for, and they had made a determination that another, another method of getting food to people would, would work better than delivery. So, so I, I think Noreen could probably speak to that. But I, I will certainly ask her to, to be ready to, to speak about that.
Okay. All right. So we'll have, we'll try to get Noreen teed up for Monday and take some action on.
Yes. Copy Mike Dennehy, so that he knows what's going on.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made. And?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Farrington, yes.
Yes.
Yes, Farrington, Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all once again, and we will.
Thank you.